Council. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Crowsey.
Here.
Heschel.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
Allison Osby. Herman.
Here.
Mugrower.
Here.
Paul Mary.
Here.
Present six.
And Councilmember Crowsey will lead us in the invocation and the pledge.
We are mindful of the blessings of liberty that we have in this nation. May our decisions tonight improve the quality of life in our city and for our residents.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we have introduction of city staff.
I'll take that, Mike, if you would please stand up. I'd like to introduce you tonight to Mike Blank, the new construction management supervisor for the engineering division of the Department of Public Works. Mike has twenty-three years of experience in the construction and surveying industry, eighteen of those here with the city of Oshkosh. Excuse me, Mike has a track record for getting projects completed successfully while coordinating with property owners, contractors, and other departments and divisions. Prior to accepting the role as construction management supervisor, Mike served as the, served the engineering division as a civil engineering technician, most recently at the CET two level. In Mike's new role as construction management supervisor, he will supervise direct and coordinate the work of the field staff within the engineering division. Mike will also be the primary point of contact for property owners that have questions regarding construction projects that are managed by the engineering division. Mike will also be involved in coordinating with private utility companies as they complete their work associated with city construction projects. So if you would please help join me in welcoming Mike to his new role with the city engineering division.
Next, we have two public hearings, the first of which is nineteen three twenty-two, approved final resolution for special assessments for concrete pavement, asphalt pavement, sidewalk, new and rehabilitation, driveway aprons, sanitary sewer main and laterals new and relay, and water main and laterals new and relay, and storm sewer main and laterals new and relay relating to contract number nineteen twelve. A is Northwest Haven Drive, formerly Emmer's Lane, two hundred feet south of Amro Road to Amro Road. B, Amro Road, six hundred fifty feet east of Northwest Haven Drive to Northwest Haven Drive. C, Edgewood Road, two hundred feet south of Shore Preserve Drive to Riff Road. And D, Kentucky Street West New York Avenue to approximately three hundred and fifty feet north. Second reading, I'll abbreviate this. Nineteen three twenty-two, approved final resolution for special assessments for concrete pavement, asphalt pavement, sidewalk, driveway aprons, sanitary sewer, main and laterals, water main and laterals, and storm sewer, main and laterals, contract number nineteen twelve. Third and final reading, resolution nineteen three twenty-two, approved final resolution for special assessments, as stated previously, relating to contract nineteen twelve. Clerk, do we have anyone registered to speak?
Yes, we do, Anne Kans, twenty-four eighty Shore Preserve Drive.
Good evening. We're here tonight, my husband and I, to request the deferment for the assessment because we are actually that, the land that, oh, the land that's abutting it. We're actually farmland. We're rated agriculture. It is being used by a farmer, we lease it to a farmer, and we would benefit nothing from having a sewer that we do not use it at this time. So we're requesting a deferment of the assessment until we use the surface or change the zoning of the property to an R one. We have no intention of doing that. We plan on keeping it as a farmland. We don't use water and sewer for the property. There are no dwellings on the property, and there is no roadway leading to or from the property. So we would not be, the improvements would not at all benefit us at this time. And we, so, we would request this deferment until such time as we would someday, but we have no intention of doing that. We want to keep it agriculture land, and we have a local farmer who is using it. That's what I have to say about that.
Councilmember Mugrower.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a quick question for you, and then before I get to asking staff, have you contacted city staff to talk about this issue at all?
Yes.
To bring it up, okay, and where has it, kind of where did it go, or where did it?
Well, they said to come here tonight to ask, request the deferment.
Okay.
We had, we met earlier with these fine gentlemen here, and they referred us to come here.
Okay, appreciate it.
Thank you.
City staff, James, I think if you wouldn't mind maybe addressing this a little bit.
Edgewood Road, the land is immediately adjacent to Edgewood Road. The sanitary sewer is being constructed in Edgewood Road. That is a piece of land that was originally a part of the plat of North Shore Preserves, and as recently as the last year or two, there was a preliminary plat that had come through to develop that land. I believe it was immediately prior to their purchase of that land. And it was because of that, that movement that we needed to get the sewer installed to make sure that service was available to that property.
So if it's not, if it's not required now, or intended to be soon, do we need to do that?
The challenge being, at such time as it may be required, we might be two to three years from being able to put it in and get it programmed again. That, that's one of the challenges that you have with waiting to install it. When it originally came up, I believe it was about two years ago, the preliminary plat came in, and we were just first able to get it programmed now for this year. So, so that's one of the challenges associated if we would not install the sewer main.
When they would have bought, you said this was in the works before they purchased the property?
Yeah, we started working on programming for the construction of the sewer when the preliminary plat had come through for that land.
So would they have been at all, within a window of being notified by a potential seller, by the seller of that property that?
There would have been no notices that we would have sent out to the previous property owner that they would have needed to disclose.
And as I'm talking to you, I'm trying to figure out on what page it's going to show me what the cost is to that individual property, but I'm not finding it while I'm scanning.
Do you have that sheet?
Thank you.
Page thirty-two.
Appreciate it.
What is that dollar, Mo?
Is it? Fifty or thirty, thirty-one, thirty-one dollars. Okay, thirty, thirty thousand nine, thirty thousand nine hundred ninety-eight dollars and forty cents.
And that's directly attributed to the piece of land that she's referring to, the agricultural piece, or?
Yes, it's, it's what's referred to as a sanitary sewer main area assessment.
I'll yield.
Just a follow-up question. Ms. Katie, right?
Oh, something.
King? Was your last name King?
Oh, Kessy.
Kessy, okay. If they were to have this rezoned or apply for rezoning, would that change this?
I'm not sure how do you mean?
She referenced earlier possibly deferring this until it could be rezoned. Would that change the outcome in terms of what's still needed?
Would zone to agriculture now?
Yeah, I mean, you, do you mean as far as, you know, the main size that's necessary? Or, I'm not quite sure I understand yet.
As I understand it, you were asking for a deferral until it could potentially be rezoned.
Well, we're, I don't know who would ever buy it from us someday, but we have no intention at this time of turning it into anything other than farmland. So we're keeping it as farmland. Actually, we're, we came from another state, and we feel it's very important in our adopted state here to keep farms going. And we like the idea of having a farm behind us and having a farmer, you know, plant and then harvest crop. Find it very exciting, and we have no intention of, as long as we're here, to change that to anything other than agriculture.
Okay, my mistake.
Councilmember Miller?
Thank you, Mayor. Specifically, what's the issue if we kick the can down the road here? I mean, what, what, what affects us here? If you were to defer the assessment or defer the construction? Def- defer the construction. If you were to defer the construction, the costs would go up at such time as it would get installed because construction costs are trending upwards.
So, but, but we wouldn't impact any other citizens by, by deferring this or any other issues? This, this is just kind of, this, this ground is slated for this time?
Do you remember the plan for that area? As far as other impacts? Do you have the plans with it?
Yeah, I do.
I, I guess what I'm looking for, if we're not negatively impacting any other citizens or any businesses or anything, why, why wouldn't we kick this down the road?
I, I know there is one developable lot on the other side of the street that would obviously not have service than if we deferred the construction.
Are they requesting this? I mean, are they, do we know if they're requesting the service, if it's?
Not immediately at this time, no.
I mean, on a scale of one to ten, how do you guys feel about kicking this down the road?
So...
You mean the construction or just?
The construction itself, yeah. I mean, I, I'm not seeing a real benefit to doing this construction right now unless you guys, I'm just, unless we're in a different.
Contract ordered?
Yes.
There may be some contractual costs associated with deleting that portion of the work. I'd have to research the, whether the percentages of deletion would kick in that might allow some contractual changes.
Mark, any thoughts?
I just wanted to ask James a question. Is, this was part of the Edgewood subdivision plat, so this is finishing that off, correct? Is that what this is all about on Edgewood Drive?
This, this area is part of the North Shore Preserve. This part over here, we're, uh, the?
The north side of Edgewood.
The east, the west side of Edgewood.
I'm sorry.
North is up on that sheet. Yes, that was a part of Edgewood Village. I believe it was originally platted as an outlot on Edgewood Village's plat.
I think, I think also where this came from was several years ago when, I think before, you guys had purchased the land, when the plat, the pre-plated came through to get service to them. I believe there's also been rumors of development north of Riff Road that, again, at such time, you know, it comes and goes, but if we can't, you know, install it now, we might not be able to plan for it for several years when something finally materializes.
This is really setting us up for?
Future development.
Future development, and that's really the drawback. It's not just about these individual lots. They're the ones being assessed at this time.
So Council, I'm sorry, Councilmember Miller, are you offering to hold this or amend this, separate it out?
Probably be appropriate to close the hearing before you had that discussion.
And then, just one, one last trailer. Mark, is, is kind of what we're talking about with replacing these special assessments would, is this?
This would not apply because these are all, these are all utilities.
Okay, all right, thank you.
And this is brand-new development.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Heschel.
Sure, so, um, what specific utility does, does this fall under?
Waste water utility.
Waste water utility.
It's all sanitary sewer.
Okay.
Somebody could come down the road and say, I need this, and if we didn't have it available, it could delay development and growth down, further down Riff Road and that. So that's, part of this is to set ourselves up for future, future development.
Councilmember Heschel.
Sure, just one follow-up. Is there the option that wastewater utility covers that thirty-one thousand dollars in order to move forward with the, with the project? Seeing that there's no?
Do, do you mean bankroll it for now to defer it as she had requested?
Correct.
Is that?
Yeah, is that, I mean, is that, is that, is that an option?
It has been done on other projects. I believe Stony Beach, I believe, may have done that at one point in time. Administrative, Pam's nodding her head on Stony Beach, so, you know, administratively, we just have to be able to keep track of it.
It essentially becomes a zero-interest loan for that person for the duration of the, until they, until they develop.
So, one more, one more follow-up. I, I think in the past, on the council, we, the storm water utility once covered a portion of Irving Avenue, not Irving, New York Avenue, between Bowen and Hazel. And, and that was because the work that was being done on that road, on that portion of the street, didn't actually benefit those. And the council at the time voted in favor of having the utility cover those costs at that time. I'm just wondering if this is like an option related to that? Those residents didn't get charged any type of deferred cost.
In, in that particular case, I believe that was related to the pavement restoration for the construction of a sanitary sewer interceptor, where about half of the street was, was repaved. So I believe it was the pavement-related assessments related to that interceptor sewer. So it wasn't related to the construction of a new main, but it was having the utility take on some cost of pavement restoration or some more costs of pavement restoration associated with that.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Councilmember Mugrower.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Roloff, you made a statement about having an impact on potential future development on Riff Road. So clarify for me, and this may be James, but clarify for, or Mr. Robby, sorry. Clarify for me, where is the sanitary sewer going in? Because looking at your map, I'm showing a connection point on Shore Preserve Drive is what I'm viewing it as, not on Riff Road. Just want to make sure I know what this is impacting for the future.
It's extending the sewer currently in Edgewood Road, extending it to the north through the intersection of Edgewood and Riff.
Okay, but this particular parcel connects off of Shore Preserve Drive. Is that what I'm seeing?
Uh, this?
Or is that the?
No, the, the parcel you see hatched that says forty-eight thousand eight hundred sixteen square feet?
Yep.
That's the, that's the person's parcel in question.
Okay, thank you for clarifying.
Because it says four oh six by one twenty, and that's what the engineer's report refers to.
Okay.
Any other questions? Councilmember Miller?
Thank you, Mayor. Staff, would you, would you, assuming we're not going down a slippery slope, it sounds like we've got precedence here. Would you prefer to defer the assessment and do the construction or not do the construction, I guess, in the, in this portion? If, if, if those were your two options?
If those were my two options, I, I would prefer to get the construction done now. It will be at a lower total cost to the adjacent property owners should you choose to defer that assessment to the future because the cost of installing it in the future, you know, I can only anticipate will go up because that's, that has been the trend in construction costs for, for some time now, so.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Clerk, do we have any other, any other people registered to speak on this item nineteen three twenty-two?
No one else is registered.
Okay. Take a motion and a second.
I move to close the hearing.
Second.
Right, is that right?
Public comments now closed, discussion. Deputy Mayor Herman.
Thank you, Mayor. If we go down Mr. Heschel's route, then we have to waive the fees for everybody because there's another assessment for over twenty-two thousand six hundred dollars that's connected to the same thing. So you, we would have to waive total fifty-seven thousand four hundred two dollars and forty-two cents if we're going to do that. We can't just eliminate the one partial because I'm sure the other two participants who are being assessed would not be very happy with our outcome. So unless we agree to waive the assessment portion, go forward with it, have the utility assume the costs, which will then probably increase utility rates to the rest of the citizens of Oshkosh who already don't like that rate, we're going to even hear more. So, you know, pushing it down the road, yes, but then that also costs the utility more, which means we then have to assess that onto our utility bills. Because the utility is picking up the cost now. So there's a, there's a trade-off. Just want to point that out. If we don't do the assessment and it goes to the utility, the utility will then have to assume it and probably raise rates to everybody else throughout the city. Just pointing that out at this point. Thank you.
Okay, do we have anyone else to pay further discussion? All right, clerk, would you please call the roll?
Crowsey.
Aye.
Heschel.
Aye.
Miller.
No.
Herman.
Aye.
Mugrower.
Aye.
Paul Mary.
Aye.
Carried five one.
Second public hearing is resolution nineteen three twenty-three, approved final resolution for special assessments for storm sewer laterals relating to contract nineteen dash twenty, various locations. And second reading, approved final resolution for special assessments for storm sewer laterals relating to contract nineteen dash twenty, various locations. Third and final reading, approved final resolution for special assessments for storm sewer laterals relating to contract nineteen twenty, various locations. Do we have anyone registered to speak?
No one is registered.
Okay, we'll take a motion and a second.
So move.
Second.
Discussion. Seeing none, would the clerk, please call the roll?
Crowsey.
Aye.
Heschel.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Mugrower.
Aye.
Paul Mary.
Aye.
Carried six.
Next, we have citizen statements to council. Citizens are to address the council only. Statements are limited to five minutes. Do we have anyone registered?
Yes, Eric Endrees, thirty seventy-one Fond du Lac Road.
Hello, thank you for letting me speak. I just have a concern with animal, the animal control policy in Oshkosh. I rent the first floor of a duplex, and lately there has been a stray cat on the property that acts aggressively toward me. It spends time in and around a window well, and ever since it noticed me through the window, it frequently hisses at me and if we make eye contact. It was unpleasant until the day it actually attacked the window at the side of me, jumped up and swatted the window while hissing, just when I opened the curtains. So I, I fear for my safety and the safety of any guests when walking around the property. I found that the city works with the Oshkosh Area Humane Society for animal control issues such as this, so I contacted them. I thought someone would be able to come to my residence and catch the animal, but it turns out that I have to rent a live trap from the Humane Society, trap the animal myself, then bring it to the Humane Society where they would check it out. If the cat is determined to be feral rather than a lost or abandoned pet, they would spay or neuter it, then release it back to the general area where it was found. This is also dependent on the Humane Society having live traps available to rent, which they did not when I visited them. Advised me to check with them again later. My main issue with this is me having to trap the animal myself. As I mentioned, this cat hisses at me when I, when seeing me through the windows or my patio doors, and has even attacked the window just because I was there. My landlady has left it up to me to deal with the cat or not. So what will happen when I, someone who has no actual training in dealing with animals, try to trap it? What if it is at the window well when I approach and it attacks me? What if I get rabies from the attack? If I'm attacked, I'll need expensive medical treatment right away regardless. And assuming I capture the animal with no issue, then I have to bring it to the Humane Society myself in my car. So then what if it scratches me as I carry the cage? What if it has ticks and the ticks end up staying in my car afterwards? I was surprised that this is the city's policy when it comes to aggressive stray cats, putting citizens in danger of being attacked by having them do the capturing themselves. I thought the worst would be coordinating a time for me to be home while someone came out to capture it, and that the thought of having to trap the animal myself never even crossed my mind. So I just ask, can this policy please be revisited? It would be logical and safe if a trained professional with the appropriate safety equipment could come and capture the animal. For now, I have to hope that the cat is not around when I venture outside, and I have to hope that when I try to capture it, one attack me and injure me. The animal control policy as it stands right now puts Oshkosh residents in danger and leaves them vulnerable to an animal attack. So I ask the city to please revisit and revise the policy to keep residents safe. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing. Do we have other citizens registered to speak?
No one else is registered.
Mr. Roloff, just off of his comment, I don't know what committee oversees that anymore, if it's parks or?
It's not specifically by committee. The police department is responsible for managing our animal control contract, and I will talk to Dean, Chief Smith about, you know, what, what the different options are. But I think what Mr. Endrees described is, is correct. I, I don't think he had any factual errors in what he was saying. That it is, we normally expect, the Humane Society offers those traps available, and what he described is fairly common in the city.
Councilmember Crowsey?
I just had a legal question on that. I mean, I know an animal is a, it's a wild animal almost outside. If something would happen to the citizen, who would be held liable for his injuries? I mean, would it be the apartment complex? Or, who would be held liable to it? I mean, if a dog bites a person and it's owned by a property owner, that person's liable, so who would be held liable?
If it's a wild animal, it would be very difficult to figure out, you know, who an owner was or to trace it back, so.
At your own risk then?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Well, having gone through this exact process about a year ago, we had several strays that were being fed in our neighborhood and calling the Humane Society and being told that we had to capture it ourselves. We did, and a volunteer came out. But it was, it was quite the ordeal, so I do empathize. And thanks for bringing that up, that we may want to revisit that policy.
Next, we have a presentation by staff on the proposed transportation fee.
Mr. Robby is going to provide the presentation. Madam Mayor and Finance Director Larson and I will, will help supplement Mr. Robby's presentation. So James, take it away, please.
Uh, thank you. A copy of the presentation was distributed to each of your stations before, so you can have it to take some notes and, you know, feel free to ask, ask questions as we go. You know, as, as you may recall, this has gone back several years and has gone through several different discussions here at the council level and at the Long Reach Finance Committee. Our most recent direction had been to go back and kind of work out some of the details. You know, as City Manager Roloff had updated the council, you know, there was a lot of details we felt we needed to kind of work out in order to bring something back. So this is a result of our time analyzing this further and coming up with some of those details. So a little bit of what we're going to cover here rather quickly tonight, just a calculation of the total developed area units, or DAU, as we've been referring to them. A calculation of our estimated revenue needs in order to replace the pavement-related special assessments. We want to stress that it is the pavement-related special assessments, not related to utility service laterals. Kind of the results of putting all of that together, and then how property owners can estimate what their fee would be based on the information that we present. So first, as we went through it, you know, we, we looked at a variety of different methods and, you know, kind of how to determine what is the most reasonable approach to implement this transportation fee to replace those pavement-related assessments. What we kind of came up with is treating all residential properties equally by counting the number of dwelling units. So whether it's a single-family home, a duplex, a three-plex, or a hundred-unit apartment complex, you know, counting the number of dwelling units, and that's the number of units that a residential property would be charged. Non-residential properties would be utilizing the amount of development on the parcel as a surrogate for the transportation impact. So, you know, taking that total developed area, dividing it by two thousand eight hundred and seventeen square feet would be getting, you know, the equivalent to one developed area unit. On the non-residential, as we described in the memo that we had sent to council, it did include a cap of a maximum of one hundred units per legal land parcel. Mixed-use properties were considered non-residential in the analysis. A little bit of a breakdown of how the, the percent of the DAUs using those calculation methodologies worked out. So you can see residential accounted for just under fifty percent of the units, and then, you know, commercial, industrial, close to forty percent, and then the institutionals, the remaining. So the institutional, city-owned properties, county, state, and the various non, nonprofit entities that are considered an institutional zoning district. The approximate total number of DAUs within the city was about sixty-one thousand. In order to calculate what level of revenue would be necessary in order to replace those pavement-related assessments, we averaged the last three years of construction project special assessments, so two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen, and two thousand eighteen. You know, going much back beyond two thousand sixteen, we were seeing a pretty significant change in cost of construction, so it just did not seem reasonable to, to include those numbers since the cost comparison just wasn't really valid anymore. So that's why we're using just a three-year average on calculating those. And those special assessment amounts, you know, we averaged them and calculated them. And those special assessment amounts, you know, we, uh, averaged them and calculated them across the various categories of pavement-related assessments. So concrete paving, asphalt paving, driveway aprons, new sidewalk, and sidewalk rehabilitation.
Yeah, i- it should be pointed out, asphalt paving refers to our capital program for asphalt. It doesn't include, James, there's a variety of, uh.
It doesn't include, yeah, cracks, crack ceiling, pothole patching, and all those maintenance activities. These are all the overlays, the asphalt overlay, uh, streets that we do. So yes, thank you, it's capital projects. So, you know, kind of breaking that down over the, uh, the three-year average, you know, the, the concrete, uh, paving certainly was the, uh, the largest amount at, you know, about one point seven five million dollars. The asphalt paving program's about four hundred thousand dollars. Driveway apron's about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. New sidewalk is very cyclical. Some years there was none, other years there was a fair amount, so that kind of went up and down, but averaged out around fifty thousand dollars over the three-year period. And the sidewalk rehabilitation, uh, that includes both the annual sidewalk rehab project as well as sidewalk rehab work that takes place, uh, as a part of other construction projects like the street reconstruction program. That was a total of about eight hundred thousand, so, you know, that added up to about three point two five million. Uh, breaking that down into an average, uh, rate per month, uh, based on the percentages of, of each of those categories before, you can kind of see, you know, that's how, you know, the four dollar and fifty cent, uh, total that, uh, you know, has been presented. You know, this is how each of those categories, uh, contributes to that four dollar and fifty cent amount. You know, concrete paving, obviously, you know, being the largest portion, you know, it's the largest portion of the rate as well. Um, for property owners who are looking to try to figure, okay, what, uh, what does this mean? How can I estimate what my, what my monthly cost will be? So a single-family home, that's, that's one dwelling unit, that's one. Uh, the monthly rate of four dollars and fifty cents, their monthly cost is four dollars and fifty cents. Uh, if you have an eight-unit apartment building, you know, that's eight dwelling units times the four dollars and fifty cents is thirty-six dollars a month. Uh, same thing, you know, if you had a hundred and four-unit apartment, uh, complex or apartment building, you know, times the four fifty, it would be about four hundred and sixty-eight dollars per month for, uh, for that building. Um, one of the things I should mention, you know, at each of these, uh, you know, the, we mentioned the non-residential cap. You know, that is on a per property, per legal parcel basis, uh, because that is, you know, the legal definition of, uh, the piece of land where the development takes place. Uh, for non-residential properties, if you want to try to estimate how many, uh, developed area units you have, take a look at your most recent city utility bill, which was the first truly monthly bill that you received. If you take a look at that stormwater roll and divide that by the stormwater rate of about fifteen thirty-four per month, that'll give you, you know, in this particular example, just under twenty developed units on this particular parcel. Uh, some properties that have taken advantage of stormwater utility credits, uh, their, their portion of their utility bill looks something like this, where they've got their base charge and then their credit's a separate line item. In this particular case, for estimating your number of DAUs, you would only use that top line, not the credit line, because that credit is, you're doing something from a stormwater practice to reduce your impact on the stormwater system. That, that's, that's not impacting the transportation system at all, so you're using that base number. In this particular case, you know, doing the math, that, that equates to about three hundred and two units on this parcel. But as we talked about, we're recommending a cap of one hundred, so this particular parcel would receive a one hundred unit count.
Mr. Robby?
Yes.
Could you just, um, interrupt and ask a question on that slide?
This one?
Yes. So there are a number of ways in which stormwater credits can be applied for, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, it's, it's by doing practices such as, you know, having a detention base and having, uh, rain guard and biofilter, you know, you're managing your runoff, uh, in a manner that, you know, lessens the impact on our stormwater system.
Does that include pervious pavement?
Um.
Or two tracks or those kinds of things?
Uh, pervious pavement, it would be looked at, the design of it would be looked at to determine if it's truly considered, uh, a pervious surface or an impervious surface. So you wouldn't necessarily get credit for it, but your amount of impervious area may be reduced, um, under that scenario, under the stormwater impact side of it.
Okay, thank you.
The only thing I would briefly add is if you do have a stormwater credit on your current bill, that would not be involved in the calculation for your DAU. So it, it is independent of the hundred, uh, DAU limit and not related.
One, one more question, James, I'm sorry.
No, no, that's fine.
Okay, I mean, if I, if I was a large multi-parcel owner out there, large campus-type thing, are we going to allow combining of the parcels, y- you know, to, to get down to that one hundred? So let's say I start at three hundred, and if I combine all my parcels, I'm going to be at one hundred.
Yeah, there are a number of ways you can go through and, you know, legally combine your parcels, you know, to make it, you know, into a single parcel. And, you know, absolutely, you know, that, that is allowed. There are a lot of, uh, a lot of places that, you know, for development reasons, tax reasons, whatever, they want to keep them separate, financing reasons. Um, you know, those are all things as individual property owners, they'll have to, um, weigh the, the pros and cons of their entire business model to see which one is, is more advantageous for them. But yes, if you had, you know, say you had three par- three contiguous parcels and they each had a, a hundred units, and you had no reason not to combine them, and you went through the process to combine them, it'd become one legal land parcel, and then the one hundred cap would apply to that one parcel.
And I'm not trying to put you on the spot, but if we kind of put that into our model, you know, maybe X percentage of people might do that, and then by there, we lose some revenue from those significant parcels, and if we haven't, I understand, I'm just.
We have not tried to analyze who may or may not benefit from trying to do that at this time.
All right, thank you very much.
Um, so, so moving on to, you know, now that we've kind of shown how, uh, a non-residential property owner can estimate the number of units or developed area units they have, you know, then it's simply taking that number of DAUs times the four dollar and fifty cent, uh, monthly rate to come up with your monthly cost. So the first example just happened to be a, a small, um, commercial property, uh, is on one of our projects this year. Um, it was a little over, or just under two and a half developed area units, so their, their bill's about eleven dollars a month. Uh, the next two, you'll notice those numbers are very much the same as the previous examples, uh, that we showed you on how to calculate. So the one at nineteen point three six seven seven, you know, that's eighty-seven dollars a month. Uh, the other one at three hundred and two units, the hundred unit cap applies, so that's four hundred and fifty is, would be the monthly, uh, bill for that property. So that's, uh, just a quick summary of, you know, the analysis. I know, um, council, you, you all received a little bit more information in a memo about a week and a half ago. This was just kind of summarizing some of that information that, uh, was contained in there and, you know, what we've gone through in order to get to this point to present this information to you.
Purpose of tonight is really to get feedback from council, uh, directing us to prepare appropriate ordinances based on input that you'd provide us, uh, based on input you've received, and of course, we'll have a couple of opportunities. Uh, this required probably, it does require an ordinance, may also require a resolution, so there'd be a few more, uh, places where this would come before council, but that this is the presentation to get some feedback.
Councilmember Muggerauer.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, first, I want to make sure I say thank you to, uh, city staff. I know you guys, uh, have spent a fair amount of time on this project, uh, whether, um, in previous years leading up to this, as well as over the last almost twelve months, that Long Range Finance has been looking at this, as, as council's been discussing it. So thank you, Trean and your staff, Mark, uh, and Ra- James, your staff, uh, you guys have been great. I appreciate all the information. I know at the last Long Range Finance Committee meeting, I appreciated how you put it together, um, and we all received a copy of it, and it's in tonight's packet for anybody to view. Um, but I appreciate how you simplified it. You put it all together. It's easily understandable that here's how we get to that four dollar and fifty cent mark, um, and here's the benefit to, uh, individual properties. I have a couple of questions. I won't take too much, because I hope that my fellow council members have, have more questions than I do on it. Uh, one of your last slides, the one where it says how to estimate your fee, um, page six at the top, you gave an example of some of the commercial properties that are under, um, they're under construction at the moment. Not that we need exact addresses, because we don't want to, um, we don't need to put anybody on the spot, um, publicly, but for example, that first one, you know, two point four seven developmental units, or the second one, or the third one, what would have been, or what is going to be, if you know it, if you don't, that's all right, and you can get back to it, but what would be their special assessment charge for the roadwork, for all the stuff that this fee would cover?
Um, the first one with the two point four seven two seven, uh, developed area units, um, implementing this would, um, our estimate would be they would reduce their current estimated assessment of just over twenty thousand dollars to about six thousand dollars, so about a fourteen thousand dollar reduction in their assessment for this project. Uh, the second one at about nineteen, a little over nineteen developed area units, uh, reduces, uh, their estimated assessment from approximately fifty-seven thousand dollars to about seven thousand dollars.
Okay.
And the last one on there is not on any of this year's projects. I was just looking for some other examples.
Sure. Um, from the commercial side of it, from a business standpoint, um, fifty-seven thousand dollars, to come up with that is a huge chunk of change to try to either finance with the city over five, ten, or fifteen years at six percent, um, with the city being their banker. A, um, an insurance policy of this kind, um, when that six or seven thousand really only counts for, um, their underground work. That's their storm ladders, uh, laterals, that's their water mains, that's what that six or seven, when, when we go from twenty thousand down to six thousand, that six thousand is the stuff under the ground, not on the surface.
Installing a storm lateral, relaying a sanitary lateral, if they need a, a water lateral relay, uh, that would be that, and then, uh, sidewalk squares associated with that lateral only.
So for example, on that first one, you give us the example, it's a savings of almost fourteen thousand dollars upfront, and they have a monthly cost of eleven dollars going forward. Takes a long time to come up to.
Your insurance policy analogy is exactly right.
That's a hundred years' worth of paying that insurance policy before, uh, it breaks even. They're, they're saving on this. Thank you. Um, one last question, and then I'll, I'll turn it over. Um, did you, at, at some point in our discussion, we had talked about different caps right now. We had settled on a hundred or suggested a hundred. But, um, was there any discussion as to a lower cap and what that impact would be on a, on the, on a fee?
Not in this detailed level of analysis. During a, a previous level of analysis, we had looked at, uh, one hundred and seventy-five. Um, I, the way we understood the direction to, to do this more detailed, uh, looks, he was looking at the one hundred, so we did not look at a- any other levels, um, in this more detailed level of analysis.
Appreciate it. I'm completely fine with the hundred cap. I just wanted to know, and that's what I thought the answer was, but I just wanted to make sure the, my fellow council members knew. I will yield back. I've got no other questions at this time.
Councilmember Crowsey?
Um, I just wanted to express feelings of citizens. Obviously, nobody likes fees. We're citizens, we don't like fees either. But as Mr. Muggerauer touched a little, just the impact of a single family, I mean, if you have a, a normal typical fifty-foot lot, without the transportation fee, it says ten thousand seven hundred dollars, and with the transportation fee, it's thirty-three ninety, so it's a savings of seventy-three hundred dollars. I mean, paying the extra four fifty a month gives you that flexibility to not ever have to worry about that. And some people say, well, my street was just redone. Well, you have grandchildren, you have children, you have brothers, you have sisters, that this could cause a hardship on, so it's just building equity and it's being a team in the whole city. So I mean, for that amount of investment, I mean, you could potentially save a lot of money down the road that you wouldn't have to take a loan out on. So I'm obviously supporting this.
Councilmember Miller?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, staff, have we looked at how many people this is going to impact over one hundred units? Do we have a estimate of, of how many people we're going to clobber?
Um, well, the over one hundred unit number that gets capped at a hundred, there were ninety-eight property owners that were in the, at, capped at the one hundred.
So I'm assuming it's our largest businesses, our, our largest rental properties, thing, things of that?
Well, rental, um, apartments would, would not be capped. Those are on the per-dwelling unit basis.
Okay.
Um, some of the biggest, um, you know, several of the Oshkosh Corp facilities, uh, are larger than that and hit the cap. Uh, Winnebago County had some properties that, um, were larger than that and hit the cap. Um, I believe, uh, you know, on, on the other side of that, um, you know, AP Non-Weiler on County A, you know, that is, was over the hundred units and hit the cap as well. Uh, Fleet Farm.
Big, big parking lots, big rooftops.
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
And that cap translates to about six point four seven acres, so you have to think, it has to be a fairly large parcel for that to take place.
Okay, all right. Have, have you heard from any of these other guys?
Um, I, I actually had a conversation with, um, uh, one of the finance, uh, staff at Oshkosh Corp. They're, they're doing their analysis and homework on it right now as well.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much.
Deputy Mayor Herman?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, Mr. Roloff, were you privy to the letter that council received from the Chamber of Commerce?
Uh, yes, I, uh, Mr. Casper.
Can you address some of those concerns of theirs, or how would this impact this? Um, there was some talk of, you know, only a five-year program, and after five years, we'd roll it over to the property tax roll and those types of things. Um, is that even feasible? Because I know one thing we talked about early, early on, and I know we addressed it with our legislators, that we don't want to switch to a program, and then three, four, or five years from now, the state cuts our legs off from under us, and we're going back to assessments, because I think we'd all get lynched at that point. So where, can some of their concerns be addressed? And they also, one of their biggest ones was the sidewalk rehab program. They don't believe that the businesses should be paying for citizen sidewalks.
Sure. Uh, well, there's, you know, the, the sidewalk issue is, is somewhat a little different than the question about the five years.
Yeah.
The, the, I, the, from what I read with the letter, the suggestion was, well, why don't we do this for five years and then just borrow for this, or have the city pay for it? We're still subject to, uh, uh, property tax limits. We're still subject to spending limits. The idea was to identify a funding source to replace this. A lot of communities have looked to, uh, a wheel tax, which, after the analysis by the Long Range Finance Committee, they did not feel that was the most equitable approach for, uh, for the residents of the city of Oshkosh. So the idea of switching it over to another funding source in five years, uh, I wish I had the crystal ball that would tell me exactly what that would happen, but, um, Mayor Hannah was on TV last night when there was some discussion about us capping or requiring voter approval for a wheel tax, and, you know, the city of Appleton has already stuck their neck out to eliminate their special assessment policy, and I think Councilmember Herman, you're the only one of the group here tonight, who, we've, we've been having this discussion for five, six years, and one of the discussions that, that I pointed out was swinging back and forth from assessment policy, no assessment, and then back to assessment, you're going to create a lot of angst. This is a very big decision for the council. If you're going to do it, do it once, but to go back, if, if the city of Appleton gets the rug pulled out from under it with respect to the wheel tax, they're probably going to have to resort to a special assessment again, and then you're going to have a lot of people who maybe got a break for a few years. Everybody else is going to be angry, and that is, that's a real political issue that the council will have to deal with. Um, and if, if you think you want to change the policy in a few years, my recommendation would be, then don't change it at all, um, and still deal with the status quo, but I think you've heard enough that the status quo has not been satisfactory, which is why you've been wrestling with this for so many years.
Could you just, if we took, um, just to follow up with that a little bit, he, he did mention that they were upset about the sidewalk rehab. What's your feelings on that, that would, that, I mean, that's the highest part, it looks like, other than concrete paving is our sidewalk rehab program? And we do, what, a five, six-year program on?
It's about eleven years that we go through the entire city, plus, um, we do rehab squares on any of our reconstruction projects.
Right, okay. So that being said, Mr. Robby, roughly, what's the average homeowner charge for sidewalk rehab? If there's a, is there an average number? Maybe Ms. Larson might have.
It's, um, right now, um, it, it averages, it's about seven bucks a square foot, twenty-five. So this year, a hundred and fifty to a hundred and seventy-five dollars per, per square.
Per square, so, and most of the time, we're not, other than when we're doing, redoing a street, we're probably not replacing more than a few slabs per property owner.
Depends on, depends on the property.
It's up to the age of the city, where you are.
I had three done, for example, in my home a couple of years ago, so it was, it wasn't that much per square. Today's number with James, what James just said, close to five hundred dollars, uh, per, per a residence, assuming that that's three.
Okay, and just final, I know Mr. M- uh, Councilmember Miller has a couple of questions, but the three, three million two fifty, that's, that's kind of based on this year's? 3, $3,250, that's, that's kind of based on this year's? I mean, is, is there a sustainable that every year, is this rate gonna go up, is it gonna go down?
It was based on an average of the amount of special assessments from the last three years.
Three years.
You know, some years are higher than others. I think, you know, at this point, I wouldn't say it's gonna go up every year, but certainly I think as with any other, you know, budget fund, you know, we need to look at it during budget time.
And this, this would be a segregated fund, Ms. Larson?
Correct.
Okay. So that it could not be used for anything else other than these identified projects?
Correct.
Okay.
And that would, the magic to that would be making sure that that's in the ordinance so that, and that, that's staff's intent.
Right, right.
This must be a segregated fund. If we, if we take it away, then suddenly, we don't have the replacement for the special assessments. This is to eliminate special assessments for, for street construction.
And I just have two quick questions. Is there a look-back clause in any of this? I didn't, I might have missed it.
We did not put a look-back provision in, with the look-back, to make sure everybody understands what you and I are talking about.
Yeah, yeah.
The city of Nina, when they implemented their fee to replace special assessments, they did a five-year look-back, which means that for projects that were done, in our case for 2018, they would get a five-year waiver of this fee. If it was 2017, it would be four, 2016, three, 20, going back until, going back to have one year. That is something that we left out there. We knew council was aware of it because we had that discussion.
Right.
And certainly, we would take direction from council based on that. We didn't provide that in there, but we wanted to, thank you for asking, we want to make sure it's out there for council's direction.
And just one last question. None of this has any impact with TIF funding or developer agreements, where we are doing infrastructure as part of the agreements and things? How's that play into this?
Brand-new construction is not included in here. When we're talking about a brand-new street, a new subdivision or something like that, that is totally separate. Our subdivision code addresses those issues. Now, with that said, we took a look at a few situations, and the one out that jumps out the most, think about Ninth Avenue west of Oakwood, that is currently a rural section of, of street. We're in a position now that we've, enough has been attached to the city that now we can do that road. A lot of people said, why don't you do it? It wasn't our road. Now it's completely our road, both sides, so we can, we can do the road and, and assess, or depending on what happens, not assess. Because there's ditches there, because there's no sidewalk, new sidewalk's gonna need to be put in. Our old policy, our current, I shouldn't say, our old current policy says we would assess those residents. As staff looked at that, we felt that it was the intent of council, that that column that you saw on the second to last page of the report, that the pavement assessment be zero. So to do that, we will end up eating the cost for something like that, and that's appropriate. We've been approached by businesses that they want to encourage their employees to either walk to work or walk at lunch, and we expect that businesses will approach us saying, we'd like sidewalks where there currently are none. Our belief is that because of that intent, it would be, you want it to be zero, we're gonna have to eat those costs. Now, that may thing, have things go up and down for a while, but over time, most of our streets are with sidewalks anyway, but over time, it's, we're not gonna develop a group of people fighting us on sidewalks if it's included in the assessment. So we felt that was appropriate to, to add that to the assessment. I hope that makes sense.
Councilmember Miller?
Thank you, Mayor. I think we got a chance to do this right. My mom owned a corner duplex recently on Otter Street, Otter and Mill, and she got massacred with, with the special assessment, you know? And I won't get into the sidewalk story, but she felt like she paid for them twice, but that's, that's an 82-year-old woman. But I want to make sure that, that we do this collectively with, with, with the residential, the business community, and let's, let's, let's make this work. And I think we can, I think there's a willingness up here to do this. I have some concerns about the sidewalk fees. I have some concerns about James 95 or 100, the guys we're gonna clobber, and I don't know if we can come up with some type of mechanism there that we can, we can look out with, for, for these people where we're not...
And I think a big part of that was putting that cap there because it's not going, you know, some of the, some of those parcels are, you know, 800 or 1,000, you know, units if you went strictly by the unit. So, you know, that 100 cap, you know, has a pretty significant impact on those properties and reduces, you know, kind of that impact and that hit to them.
Yeah, and I'm not outlining your, your, your deal, but maybe there's a, maybe there's a glide scale there for those people before we fully impact them or something. But I, I, I think if we slow this process down, do it right, I think we're all gonna be very, very happy. So the sidewalk, the sidewalk fees are around $800,000?
Yes, sidewalk rehab.
Sidewalk, thank you.
And Jake, if you maybe could put the slide up that shows, I think James had put it results, so we can get that, yeah, that one. No, no, the next one. Because it really breaks it down into the cost per, you know, where the $4.50 per month comes from. And the sidewalk is $1.11. And admittedly, it's about a quarter of it. There's full disclosure. So I thought that would be something, if you want to talk about sidewalks, that's really the slide, if you want to talk about sidewalks, that's where you look at it.
Do you, do you think staff could go back and, and take a look at that sidewalk number and maybe get that down in the 40-cent range for everybody? At least run some numbers for us? I'm not, I'm not carving that in stone, but...
I assume what you mean by that because our goal from day one has been to have that column be zero. So for us to assume those costs rather than include it in the fee, if you did that, we would have to do additional borrowing. And actually, that question was raised by member of the Board of Realtor, or member of the Realtors Group at the chamber meeting. And it would require additional borrowing by the city. We could do that. It's just that, we just have to recognize that we would be assuming that through borrowing, and that would get assessed to the, that would be borne by the general taxpayer. But that's, that would, you'd have to do that if you wanted to make that happen.
Ms. Larson, would you be able to expound on that, please?
The one thing that I would offer to the council is, when we do discuss this and we evaluated this policy thoroughly, the one thing that was at the top of our mind was our strategic plan. And there is a strong connection to sidewalks and healthy neighborhoods, and how that does interrelate to our strategic plan. So I would just encourage that conversation for the council as well.
Thank you. And I'll just say that, you know, we, we have worked as a council and the boards and commissions and staff for quite a period of time on this. This does go back several years. And I was a proponent of the vehicle registration fee increase until such time it became apparent that that could be yanked, and that would kind of give us this whiplash financially. When this alternative came about and was recognized that Nina was doing this, I was certainly interested in, in hearing that. I will just say that as, as it relates to the sidewalks, equity in terms of transportation, because not everybody is vehicle-dependent for their transportation, and those who are utilizing the buses or walking or other means are reliant upon having sidewalks. So I would be supportive of keeping that in.
Deputy Mayor?
Thank you. Two things, two things quick. To Councilmember Miller's comments, I support reducing it. I don't know what the magic number might be, because I think that is a concern to the business community, very big, very much. I don't know if cutting it in half, how much more we'd have to borrow, that type of thing, maybe some scenarios would help us. And the other thing is, where, how are we gonna get this out into the community? One of the citizens that contacted me said, I just heard about this. How, how, how are we gonna do this? How are we gonna, but I know in our new, our projects this year, you sent out a letter or a notice that the council's reconsidering. But what about those that are not at all, their street's not up, or they got a notice that their street's up in two years or three years, and we're starting to assess it? Look at it, or my sidewalk's in the program? How are we gonna get this out in the community? Are we gonna take out an ad in the Herald or the Northwestern, or just how are we gonna explain it to our citizens?
This issue has been discussed for about the past two years actively, direction from council had been the past six months. There were some residents that showed up regularly at the Long Range Finance Committee. I'm looking at Councilman Mugarar because he was there. We've had people go. I mean, we can certainly continue to do that, but generally, even with special assessments, until you mail somebody a...
A bill.
A bill, it's, that gets our attention. This is, you know, it will likely, you know, requires to keep doing more information. We do have members of the media here, they're covering it. We've been putting it out on social media, but, you know, it's, it's an ongoing effort for us to do it. And I'm not saying we've, we've actually, you know, can we say we checked off every box? No. We can certainly do that to let people know. The ordinance is gonna be, the ordinance would have to go through two readings, and that would be publicized as well, so we can certainly do it. I don't know if we're necessarily gonna get a huge turnout. I appreciated that the Chamber of Commerce reached out. We could, I talked to them six months ago about this, talked to them a couple of weeks ago about it, so I know they're aware of it. A similar question was asked, what can we do? All we can do is just keep plugging away and letting people know and hope that they, it captures their attention. I'm glad you mentioned the one thing, we have put the notice in the special assessment notices, and as you were going through the agenda tonight, that popped up because it was a, it was a bright pink piece of paper, because we, we want people to recognize, because they've heard about this. And I can tell you that the folks on Hazel Street who are getting their streets dug up right now, they're fully aware of what's going on because they're watching it, and some of them, they have already contacted you. The people who are in the 2023 Capital Improvement Program are not gonna be contacting you. That's just, I hope that's not too cynical, but that's just the reality.
It's reality.
Councilmember Miller?
If I could just offer a shameless utility bill plug, we are getting ready to take our utility billing program live, and we now do have a significant number of citizen email addresses, so that is a new medium to be communicating with our citizens and our businesses here in Oshkosh.
So you're saying that we now have the capability of interfacing via email with our utility customers? Wow, it's 2019, this is great.
I must plug.
Only the ones that have provided it for us.
But those email addresses then.
That's a good number.
Councilmember Mugarar?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Let's have two quick things before, I think we gotta give some direction to staff on, on how best to move forward. I've had numerous conversations with, with Mr. Casper from the chamber and with some of my friends in the business community. And in regards to the letter that Mr. Casper supplied to us, I, one thing, I don't want to use the word bothered me, but one thing struck me a little bit, and I'm just gonna, I'm gonna read a quote, "It's in the best interest of the citizenry of Oshkosh to keep the city sidewalks in good condition and repair." The city's, the sidewalk repair program is more appropriately and equitably funded by the city's general fund." End quote. I think it's in all of our best interests, the business community and the citizens who live here and pay taxes too. We, as Ms., as Madam Mayor, Paul Mary alluded to, not everyone has a car. Plenty walk to work, plenty walk to businesses. Walking up and down Main Street are downtown, walking up and down Oregon Street are other downtown, or our southern downtown, which it should be referred to as. If we didn't have those sidewalks in such, in such a good shape at the moment, you know, would people be wanting to walk up and down and use those small businesses that we need, that this community needs? So I take a little bit of an issue with that, that, that the business, and maybe I'm reading too much into it, but the businesses benefit from that, to me, equally as the residents do in the city of Oshkosh, that sidewalk program. So I take that, I take that one a little bit, a little bit harder. And then Ms. Larson actually beat me to it. Was one of my suggestions was gonna be an email, since we are accumulating email addresses, it's an easy, convenient way. And obviously, we have many different means of communication with the, the general public. But as it is, like usual, when it comes to budget season and any other major thing, usually until it's voted on, nobody shows up and, and talks about it until after it's already done, unfortunately. We have to do our best. We can only keep continuing to talk about it. The media talking about it has been great. The business community talking about it has been great. It's encouraging engagement, encouraging conversation, and that's what we need. We need to make sure we keep talking about it. And so any way possible, whether it's social media, print, if it's equitable, hire a plane to fly around the city and give us a, a website to go look at, or, you know, some smoke screens, some smoke signals up there. Whatever we need to do to get people to learn about it, I'm all in favor of, so. But we do need to give staff some direction on how to move forward over the next few weeks here and on how to bring this back.
And we have another council member, Councilmember Miller, like to make some comments?
Thank you, Mayor. You skipped over me last time.
My apologies.
I'm teasing you, but...
It still says empty seat. I'm sorry.
I'm teasing you, but one thing I want everybody to understand, especially the residential customers, what we're basically doing here is, is selling you insurance. I mean, if you live on a terrible street and it's scheduled in the next five years to be redone, you're gonna get a hefty tax bill and, or a special assessment, I shouldn't say tax bill, special assessment. But this, this is literally insurance. You're, you're paying bits and pieces for this every month, and, and some of you are gonna benefit and some of you are gonna get hurt short-term. The other thing I can tell you is, it, it's kind of an insurance policy for value. Again, I'm talking about my mother, but, you know, her duplex on the corner of Otter and, Otter and Mill, she had these big special assessments come in, and all of a sudden, she's 82-years-old, she's getting ready to sell the property, well, if there's $30,000 or $40,000 of special assessments there, nobody wants to pick up that duplex with that $30,000 or $40,000. So in the negotiations, and this is just business, it happens, I'm not blaming anybody, she got whatever that special assessment was knocked off the value of her property. So I really want the people at home to understand, this, this is insurance for you. You're gonna, you're gonna get charged $4.50 a month, or you're gonna get a big special assessment unless, unless I'm wrong, staff.
That's the whole idea.
So I mean, for, for those situations, I, I think this is very important for this community to get this right. I also don't think we need to have the business community pay the freight for this. So I want to make sure we do this right, we spread this around equally, and, and it benefits everybody. So, thank you.
So there really is no perfect solution here. It's not an exact science. We're trying to put something together that benefits the most possible. So we need to give some clear direction. I'm thinking we should be able to get something back in terms of a format of an ordinance in, what, two council meetings?
Yeah.
One council meeting?
Yeah, one council meeting or two, depending on how the city attorney's risk is, because he risks before the meeting, so, and not the city clerk, they have a pair of them over there. But we've been working on this in anticipation of council's direction on this. So we're, I think we're gonna be in a decent position. I, I think we can do it by the next meeting for the first reading, but it's gonna require...
First reading.
And I would not recommend doing this at a single reading.
No.
The public needs to speak up on this. This is just essentially a workshop presentation. So, you know, we've gotten feedback from the chamber, and somebody referenced a couple of those. And those are legitimate issues that we can talk about, the, whether it's sidewalks or some of the other issues, you know, we can, we can present an ordinance to you if you've got some direction for us, it, just make it easier because it's fewer things you'll have to work on amending the evening you start considering it. So if you've got some feedback, you know, staff's prepared to, to make those changes and bring them back.
Deputy Mayor Herman?
Thank you, Mayor. To that point, I, I support this. I think this is a way to, to go. You know, I've been on council 10 years, and probably all 10 years when we do our street programs, we have citizens like tonight coming up. And I think this is a fair way. I'm wondering though, two things. Are there any other committees that this would have to go in front of? Long Range Finance is the one that kind of pushed it out, brought to council. Would this have to go in front of the Plan Commission? Would it have to go through the Sustainability Board, the Bike and Pedestrian Board, because we're talking about sidewalks and streets and, so should the other committees have a little bit of an opportunity, which would then be another opportunity for our citizens to go to those meetings? Or should we even have some public information meetings, which we've done? You know, we got, we had one last night that I could not make, and I know Councilmember Pesca would make the Parks Board one either, but we've done that for Lake Shore Park. Should we have? we have a couple public meetings? Let the citizens weigh in on this too, because they're the ones that are gonna be, as, as Councilmember Miller said, are gonna be paying, paying it, and it is like an insurance policy versus getting an assessment. So I, maybe, I, I'm not gonna speak on behalf of other council members, but I, maybe a couple of public information meetings would be a good thing to have too. Is there, is there a dire need to rush it through, other than we're in the middle of our street project program now?
The, the real issue is, is getting it started so we can get the cash flow to start funding it.
Right.
I think with the other one, it may help if council maybe lets people know kind of where we assume the council is going, because everything we've said is, the street project for 2019 would not be special assessed, and I think that that's gonna be, that'll be something that we've presumed, because that was the discussion at the beginning of the year, so we've made that clear. I don't know if I necessarily need to go to any board or commission, but certainly if the council wants us to do some public information meetings, I don't know what kinda turnout, but I'd absolutely be supportive of, of putting staff resources into promoting it and, and doing it, and we'll, we'll see who shows up. I know some folks did come to Long Range Finance, and maybe they would tell their neighbors, there were some, somebody at that meeting mentioned the insurance issue, so that was a, that was a good explanation of how this works. We could certainly do that, do this presentation that we did tonight, try to answer questions, but having people do the math on whether it's, it's Councilmember Miller's mother or anybody else, it's appropriate that you do that and say, how's this gonna impact me?
Councilmember Miller?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't think it would hurt to have a, a meeting and, you know, an open forum, get some feedback. I, I'm gonna guess that the majority of the citizens are gonna be for this, I mean, I, I know I certainly would, especially if I lived down a street that wasn't looking so hot, but I think more importantly, I'd like to hear from everybody, and, and I'm talking about our, our business community. I, I'd like some feedback from those people, like I said, I used the word clobber earlier, but we're gonna have 100 business customers in this community get clobbered by this thing, and I'd like some feedback from them as well, so.
I would venture to say, the 98 people who have caps are probably not gonna be the ones talking as much as the people who have, who have 97 and 96 and maybe owe multiple parcels, because the people, I think James has pointed out well, if you're, if you're the, one of those 98, you've got a cap, so we could charge you this much, we're only charging you that much, it's the people that maybe owe multiple parcels, and I heard that said too, and it, if they can combine their parcels, that'll take care of it, but in terms of us doing a work of
I was just gonna suggest, if we're talking about putting this out to any boards and commissions, they, you know, similar to what Parks has done, sustainability, for example, Sustainability Advisory Board and Bike and Pedestrian could potentially have a joint meeting, which would be a public meeting for those to weigh in. I think we've heard quite a bit from the business community, all of, council received numerous emails, so I can't speak for those two committees, but perhaps they would consider a joint one. Councilmember Crowsey?
I'm in agreement with a couple of the council members up here, I think the more transparent we are, the better, have some open house type question answer sessions with residents, maybe we could have somebody there that could plug in their, the residents' property and say, okay, this is how much you'd save, here's the black and white, you know, and obviously, as Councilmember Miller said, it's an insurance policy, but it's also a cheap insurance policy, where you're paying a small payment a month for something that, as Mr. Mugarar said, would, might take 100 years to recoup, so it's a good investment in a, in a program, and to the, to the business owners, I mean, it's a partnership with the residents. If the residents don't have the money, they aren't gonna shop at your businesses, and business owners are residents as well. So if they would be saving thousands of dollars on an assessment, they would have more money to invest in their business, to invest in other businesses, it's, it's just a, a partnership that businesses and regular residents share, and it would make the city better.
Do you need any more specific direction?
I think what I'd like to do is schedule, I wanna get this done before the 4th of July in terms of a meeting, because once, if we start doing it on the 4th of July, nobody's gonna come, and we wanna encourage people, but perhaps the week of June 24th, we could look at doing an evening type of meeting.
A joint one with?
If, if the council feels strongly about putting one commission or another, I don't think it has to do that, but we could do an open house and notice it as a joint meeting of any of the boards and commissions, just in case we
Some of them show up.
And some of them, enough of them show up to get a quorum, and we wouldn't want them to not have, not be able to walk in the room, and city attorneys agreeing with that idea, so, and maybe more of an open house, like Councilmember Crowsey pointed out, and we could, you know, we'll try to kick around some of those ideas and how we could do that, and we want people to know what this is, but when they see the insurance value of it, I think we can make a pretty good case, and I'd welcome to do it, it's, you know, an hour, hour and a half of an open house here in Route 404 would, would probably be a good, a good way to do it.
No more than an hour and a half.
Yeah, I, I don't think, it depends on how many people show up, and we'll certainly give them all the attention that they deserve.
And I would hold it, no, you know, it doesn't have to be like, you know, I, 5:30, 6 o'clock, people most, you know, second shift people aren't gonna be able to make it no matter what anyways, but if you make it too late, you had, you know, all the other activities that families have and stuff, and so, you know, it'd be nice to get them to come in a little bit.
Okay. In terms of them, what I'm also hearing is, you don't wanna schedule this with council until after those types of inputs, because people are gonna have to absorb it and everything, so probably bring it back on July 11th rather than
July 9?
June 25th.
You mean July 9?
Thank you.
Yes.
June 11th, thank you. Yes, July 9.
July 9 I think it would be
Yeah, that would make sense. So we'll probably bring it back on July 9th, perhaps put this back on for additional discussion at the next meeting to get us, to get us a little more, we'll, we can start working on it in anticipation of some action, and then, you know, the different issues that are out there, if any of them continue to rise, if council wants to look at tweaking things, we can certainly do that. The idea behind that results graph that I pointed out was to give you, there are the components, and you can debate the components, and that, it was there for that intention, so council wants to discuss that, you know, we certainly wanna accommodate you. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Miller?
Oh, thank you, Mayor. I, I would like staff to specifically go back and rework some of those numbers if I'm, if I'm the only one, but, you know, at that
I think, I'd like to see a little
You know, around that
If we split it.
The sidewalk one?
Yeah, the sidewalk, I'm sorry, the sidewalk one, yeah, we've only talked about one thing, sorry.
So two of you are asking for that?
Yep.
Who else is supporting that?
Are they, I think they're just asking for them to go back and look at it, I don't think that, policy wise, it doesn't sound, I don't, I don't wanna presume and
No, no, what we're asking, I, I guess what I'm saying is, is I, I, I think Councilmember Herman is, is splitting the difference with me, I, I, in my mind, I'd like to get the sidewalk portion down to 40 cents and, and see what that looks like, I think.
40 cents, or even if you take the dollar 11 and go to 55 cents, I just wanna know how much are we gonna have to borrow over and above if we don't stay at the dollar 11?
So then, could we look at a higher cap? If we're gonna look at lower sidewalk, can we look at a higher cap?
For business?
For business.
I, I can't be I, what, I guess what I'm saying, what I'm, what I'm asking for is just, I just wanna see, I, I wanna see what those numbers look like and, and what our cost of borrowing is, is basically, I just, I wanna make a financial decision here, so, that's all.
We would have to identify what the funding source would be, if we lowered it to whatever, we'd have to find a funding source. Ms. Larson and I discussed some options, we can certainly present those to council.
But overall, are we in agreement that this, overall, so far, that
No, we're not. We're not voting.
No.
We're giving direction.
Correct.
Right.
And so giving proper direction as to how to create the ordinance and resolution, so we don't send them back and forth, multiple meetings. Does, what they have put together so far as a rough framework for a resolution and subsequent ordinance, or vice versa, is there, have we given them enough direction?
At this point, we would just identify funding sources, and council still hasn't settled on a, a different number.
I'm talking about the entire policy, the entire thing, the entire wording, you know, to put the whole thing together, is staff, does staff have enough from us to put it together at this point, to start moving the process?
Yeah, I mean, you, you'd still have to tweak it based on your preferences, but we could prepare the ordinance, I mean, we're, we're in a position, the other outstanding issue that I think is out there, and I can't remember which council member mentioned it, but do you wanna look, look back provision? Do you wanna, do you wanna look back provision, is something we want us to look at as well?
And if we do a look back, how far back?
I think five years would be adequate. I think there was mention of that earlier in some correspondences that we had, you were thinking five years.
Councilmember Peschall?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I guess I just want, I just don't want any voice up here to not be heard in that sense, so if we're going to look at reducing that amount as it relates to the sidewalk, I think we should also look at Mayor Paul Mary's suggestion of looking at the limit or the cap, as well as looking at the, the look back, so these are all elements that every, that members of this council have, have talked about as being something that should be looked at through this, so I just, just, the, the interaction that we just had, I just wanted to confirm that, 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 that all comments from the council are gonna be provided merit.
The, the cap issue is relatively easy for staff to provide to council, because we did a statistical analysis, so it's a, it's more of a higher level, so we know it's 98, because with 100, we can give you an idea of what the caps are going up and down, so it's, we can, I'm happy to provide that, we'll, statistically, we can run some numbers for you.
Thank you for indulging me.
Anything else?
Councilmember Peschall?
I have one more, so, and it, and it more so goes back to our definition of, of the properties on the non-residential side, so I work for the Oshkosh Housing Authority, I, I assume that we would be considered an institution, correct?
Correct.
So that, so that means that we would fall under that, under that cap, correct?
If you, if you have a property, yes, I mean, every property is subject to the cap. The airport, the county is probably the classic institutional government example, because they, that's a very, very large, so their, you know, acres and acres of airport would go down to 100 units, that would be their cap.
Sure.
With respect to the housing authority, they, their lots generally are not super big, so they wouldn't necessarily
They're compact, yes.
Yeah, they're compact, and so they wouldn't necessarily have as much impervious surface to hit the cap.
But they wouldn't fall under the residential side, they would fall under the non-residential side. And I'm not, I'm just putting this out as an example of institutional
I have to go back and look at how, how they've fallen thus far in the analysis, I, I don't know off the top of my head.
Sure.
It seems that, it seems that, since they are subject on our rental housing inspections, that it would fall residential, but I'll be interested to hear how that goes too.
Yeah, there, there are certainly a few, a few instances where, you know, whether it's, you know, zone this or considered that, you know, I think there are a few instances, I think, that would, do require a little bit closer look at things. You know, some of the riverfront mixed-use zoning district, you know, some of those properties are just residential properties, so there are, there are a few things that need a little bit closer look at, but, you know, it's, it's the, the 5% and under, you know, that we can't get to that level of detail until we actually start, you know, trying to move into an implementation plan and say, okay, where are the little hiccups that we need to fix?
All right, moving on?
Thank you.
Consent agenda. Clerk, do we have anyone registered to speak to any consent agenda items?
No, we do not.
We do not. All right. Bring it back to council for a motion in a second on the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Councilmember Mugarar?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First, I need to pull 19331 and have that voted separately, number 13 on the agenda tonight, resolution 19331.
Sorry.
That's all right. And in regards to 19324, 325, and 326, if we can talk about those, maybe Ms. Larson and our expert from, is it Ellers?
Yes.
Can give us a little insight as to some of our bonds and notes that we were looking to sell today, the, they came back, interest rates look positive, give us a little analysis and, and what we, what we got.
Sure, so we sold three series of the five total, the remaining two will be at the next council meeting. The Series A, which is GO funding street improvements, we received a total of three bids on that, the winner was Hutchinson Shaki Early and Company with about a 2.5% interest rate, and the total P and I on that issue is gonna be about 220,000 less than the report that you were provided several months ago, and again, that's just a function of where the market has moved over the last three months, so this ended up being a very good time to sell the debt, because we've seen that, a fairly significant drop in interest rates. On all three issues, you received a premium, meaning that the winning bidder is purchasing the obligations at a price greater than their face value, and what that allows us to do is to take some of those funds and reduce the issue size, so the actual amount of the resolution, all three of them in fact, is going to be slightly different that you're acting on. So in the case of the 19A bonds, the new power amount is 5,380. On the 2019B notes, which is funding all other non-utility capital improvement projects, so basically everything that's not a street improvement or a utility improvement, received five bids on that, the winner was BOK Financial Securities, interest rate was 1.92%, we reduced the issue size down to 15,820, and the total principal and interest will be about 510,000 less than the pre-sale estimate. The other aspect of this is we are refinancing your Series 2009A bonds for debt service savings, and based on the final rates, over the next nine years, you're going to save about 660,000 in debt service payments. Lastly, the 2019C Stormwater Utility Revenue Bonds, we received two bids on those, the winning bid was Baird with a 2.85% interest rate, the issue size here was dropped down to 8,060, and the total principal and interest will be not quite a million dollars less than the pre-sale estimate, so all in all great results, and we'll also, as I said, be back in two weeks with the, the balance of the issues.
If we can refinance some other ones, let's try to do that too.
We are actually, both the D and the E series include a refinancing component as well.
We've been working on, actually, one of the city manager's goals is a long-term debt policy and, and how we go forward, and one of the positives we're hoping from that is that at some point Moody's likes us enough to maybe give us a better bond rating. We've obviously carry a significant debt load, and to get a better rating, what kind of reduction in that debt load would you expect us to need to achieve to get a, a better rating or get a favorable response from them?
What I would say, and we've had some discussion about this, you know, based on the city's capital plans, even though you're, you've made substantial progress in reducing your debt burden, that's still gonna remain elevated for a pretty significant period of time, so I, I wouldn't try to set a goal of getting your debt burden down for the sole reason of achieving a higher rating, because I just don't think that's reasonable. But the other thing to remember is that debt burden is only about 10% of your overall rating, so there's many other aspects that go into that, some of which you control, some of which you don't control, so really, when you look at your rating, what you wanna do is look at all those different elements and have a plan that focuses on the controllable ones, and, you know, doing the best job you can across the board, and if you read the rating report, which is attached to the Series A large report that I handed out, that'll give you some insight as to what the rating agency looks at as the city's credit strengths and those areas that are more challenged, so gives you a sense of where you, you need to focus on.
Appreciate it, thank you very much.
Certainly.
All right, so, looking at pulling 19331, can we have a motion in a second on that?
Make a motion?
Second.
We don't need a motion, a second to poll.
Never mind, we're pulling from consent.
Oh, all right. So we're approving the
Approving the consent agenda less 19331.
I think Mr. Miller would like to speak.
Councilmember Miller?
Thank you, Mayor, I'd also like to pull 19341.
I'd also like to pull 19341.
And your question is? Is your question for staff or for me?
No, I'd just like to pull it and comment on it, so.
So we need a motion and second to approve minus 331 and 341.
We already have a motion and a second, Madam Mayor. Okay.
Clerk, can you please take the roll?
Crowsey.
Aye.
Peschall.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Mugrower.
Aye.
Paul Mary.
Aye.
Curated six.
So now we vote on 19331 separately. So any further discussion on that?
No.
We need a motion and a second.
Motion to approve 19-331.
Second.
Discussion. Councilmember Mugrower.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm going to be abstaining from voting on this particular issue, not that there's a direct conflict, but just to make sure that there's no perceived improprieties or any perceived or real conflicts. Foreign print is my employer, so I'm going to choose to abstain this evening.
Can we please take the roll?
Crowsey.
Aye.
Peschall.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Mugrower.
Present.
Paul Mary.
Aye.
Curated five, one present.
All right. Need a motion and a second on 19341.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
341, thank you. Thank you, Mayor. I was, I was just hoping we could talk a little bit about our Parks Board member that we're replacing. He would really like to stay on that Parks Board. He's, he's got a lot of experience, and he's got a lot of ties to several, several groups here in the area. And I was just wondering if you would consider possibly nominating Todd Kaufman for that, for that position.
It's not open for discussion. I made the appointment. Councilmember Crowsey.
I just want to remind council that our job is to vote on the mayor's appointments, not to select the people, and then vote on who we want on there. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Councilmember Mugrower.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have just one concern with a new vacancy that had been created, the Robert Viger. Am I saying the last name correct? Roberts, Viger. His term was not set to expire for another year or two, I believe. And I'm wondering where, was that a, a willing resignation that was offered, or was that something that was suggested to Mr. Viger to resign to create an opening for someone to be appointed that the mayor saw, saw fit?
Did you have that conversation with Mr. Viger?
I'm asking the, the mayor who appoints, which is in her right. Just asking if, if that was a forced resignation of a board member.
There was nothing force. So certainly, you had every opportunity to speak with Mr. Viger. If you want to question my appointments, do so. But I made the appointments based on openings. Openings were created by a variety of, we had someone who was deceased, we had someone who was relocated, we had someone who retired, we had someone who resigned. So numerous openings were created by a variety of means. Does anyone else want to question it? Can you please take the roll?
Crowsey.
Aye.
Peschall.
Aye.
Miller.
No.
Herman.
Present.
Mugrower.
No.
Paul Mary.
Aye.
Lost three, one no, one present.
I'm calling a recess. Five minutes.
The Oshkosh Common Council is currently in a break. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on demand at oshkoshmedia.org and radio simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us. Coverage will resume shortly. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on demand at oshkoshmedia.org and radio simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us. Coverage will resume shortly. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on demand at oshkoshmedia.org and radio simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us. The Oshkosh Common Council is currently in a break. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on demand at oshkoshmedia.org and radio simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us. Coverage will resume shortly. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on demand at oshkoshmedia.org and radio simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us. Coverage will resume shortly. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on demand at oshkoshmedia.org and radio simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us. Coverage will resume shortly.
Zoom, the June 11th common council meeting. Moving on to pending ordinances. Ordinance 19343 amend various sections of Chapter 30 zoning ordinance. Plan Commission recommends approval.
No one is registered.
Anyone registered? Okay.
Move to approve.
Motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
It appears, I, I'm going to just bring this up, but it does appear that we had some correspondence, council, I believe, received this. There was a question regarding driveways being widened from 24 feet to 36 feet. Is Mr. Lyons here or Mr. Davis? Could you just expound on the need for widening with more pervious surface? The concern for the citizen was adding that much more impervious surface.
Yes. So over the years, we've had a significant number of requests in some of the newer subdivision areas of the city where individuals have three-stall garages and a desire to have a full-width driveway for their three-stall garage instead of a 24-foot driveway that comes past the property and then tapers to it. So the staff investigated what most communities in our area are doing. If they allow basically mat, full-width driveways to their garages, we found we were one of the few committees that was not currently allowing it. So having those discussions with neighbors and a number of requests we've received over the years, talking with Department of Public Works, we felt it was appropriate to match kind of the more current style of residential development.
Is, is there any distinction with regard to use of pervious concrete? Or is this assumed to be all concrete and/or asphalt?
You would be permitted to use impervious concrete or other impervious methods if you were getting close to your maximum impervious cap. We would still treat kind of that driveway curb cut the same whether you chose a pervious or impervious option.
All right. Thank you. So any further discussion? I see none. Clerk, would you please take the roll?
Crowsey.
Aye.
Peschall.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Mugrower.
Aye.
Paul Mary.
Aye.
Curated six.
Next, ordinance 19344, approve parking restrictions on Otter Avenue in the cul-de-sac between Lake Point Drive and Sunny Brook Drive, Custer Avenue and Court Street. Do we have anyone registered to speak?
No one is registered.
All right. Can I have a motion and a second on 19344?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Seeing none, can you please take the roll?
Crowsey.
Aye.
Peschall.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Mugrower.
Aye.
Paul Mary.
Aye.
Curated six.
Next, we have new ordinances. 19345, there would be no action taken this evening. Temporarily close Pioneer Drive and 14th Avenue. Allow persons to use a portion of Pioneer Drive for viewing of July 4th fireworks show and allow carions for July 4th fireworks show. Ordinance 19346, approved closure of Bowen Street, Wisconsin Street, West Irving Avenue and West South Park Avenue. Staff recommends waiving the rules. Do we have anyone registered to speak on either of those items?
No, we do not.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Mugrower.
Madam Mayor, I move to waive the rules and adopt 19346 since its first reading.
Second.
Councilmember Mugrower.
Nope.
Nope. Councilmember Peschall.
Sure.
Staff, can you give us the rationale as to the benefit of waiving the rules, please?
The benefit to waiving the rules would allow our water distribution staff to get out there and get this work done and get the street back opened up. Right now, you know, obviously, if this were approved tonight, we would have advanced warning signs placed starting tomorrow morning right away to give that one week notice that we do require any time a street such as these would be closed. In this particular case, these are related to lead service line replacements. In each of these locations, the private side has already replaced their lead service line to their house, and our water distribution staff is doing the public side replacement rather than hiring a contractor. We are, we have the staff with the ability and the capabilities to do so, so, you know, we're saving some costs that way by having our staff do it. And they're just, they're trying to get that work scheduled and get in and get out before the holiday.
Okay. And staff, staff have, have sent out some type of communication to those residents?
Actually, several of those residents have been contacting us, asking us when we're going to get the public side done, so.
Okay. Thank you.
So we have a motion and a second on the floor for moving to waive the rules. We'll need to take the roll on that.
Crowsey.
Aye.
Peschall.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Mugrower.
Aye.
Paul Mary.
Aye.
Curated six.
And now we also need to vote on the resolution. Or, I'm sorry, a motion and a second on the resolution.
Move to approve.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Crowsey.
Aye.
Peschall.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Mugrower.
Aye.
Paul Mary.
Aye.
Curated six.
Moving on to new resolutions. Resolution 19347, approve annual city licenses renewals only. Do we have anyone registered to speak on that item?
No one is registered.
Motion and a second.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. None, please take the roll.
Crowsey.
Aye.
Peschall.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Mugrower.
Aye.
Paul Mary.
Aye.
Curated six.
Resolution 19348, approve combination Class B license Uptown Corp., Uptown 2, 1601 Oregon. Do we have anyone registered on this one?
No one is registered.
All right. Motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
Please take the roll.
Crowsey.
Aye.
Peschall.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Mugrower.
Aye.
Paul Mary.
Aye.
Curated six.
Next, we have resolution 19349, approve combination Class B license Amy Machi, Machi's Bar 668 North Main. This does include a hearing on the non-renewal of the license. Staff recommends non-renewal. And we will open this licensing hearing for 19349. Do we have any appearances here on behalf of the applicant?
Yes, we do. Amy Machi.
Okay. Is Machi?
Good evening. Good evening. Amy Machi, 1378 Lake Breeze Road.
One, one, I'm just going to stop you one moment. We need to go through the procedure.
Yes.
Hold up one second. No, stay right there. Okay. All right. So this is an official hearing. The purpose of this meeting is to conduct the hearing per Section 125.12 of Wisconsin statutes on the decision to renew or not renew the license of Amy Machi for premises located at 668 North Main Street, Oshkosh, Wisconsin. The procedure for the hearing will be as follows. The deputy city clerk will testify as to the records pertaining to the property and the notice to licensee for this hearing. Thereafter, the licensee, that's you, or her representative, will be allowed to ask questions. The council will then be given opportunity to ask any questions clarifying any information that's been presented by the deputy city clerk. The licensee, again, that's you, will then be given an opportunity to present any evidence that she wishes the council to consider in relation to the decision whether or not to renew the license. Anyone giving testimony before the council will be sworn in by the city clerk after licensee has been given the opportunity to present any information he or she wishes the council to consider. The council members will then be permitted to ask questions of the licensee and any witnesses. Thereafter, the licensee will be given a final opportunity to make a statement to the council. The hearing is then closed. The issue will be discussed and voted on by the council. The council will base the decisions only on the evidence presented at this hearing. So next, we have testimony by the deputy city clerk regarding the notice of intention to not renew, facts regarding the license use and any communication from the licensee. The clerk is going to swear her in.
Do you swear that the testimony that you shall give regarding this matter will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes. Thank you. Okay. Now, at this time, Ms. Machi, you, she also needs to be sworn in, correct? Ms. Machi?
Well, listen.
Okay.
She is.
All right.
Okay. I am Angela Jaikle, Deputy City Clerk for the City of Ashkosh. As Deputy City Clerk, my duties include the day-to-day administration of the city's alcohol beverage licensing program, including the duty to keep the official records for the City of Ashkosh pertaining to liquor licenses. The official records in the city clerk's office indicate that the license issued to Ms. Amy Machi for Machi's Bar located at 668 North Main Street in the City of Ashkosh has not been used since July of 2017, when the license was turned over to Ms. Machi from the prior license holder. Land contract purchaser and tenant at the same location, and then the bar was closed. The official records for the city clerk's office also indicate that Ms. Machi failed to complete the requirements for the issue of the license for the 2018-2019 license year, even though the license was granted by council for the 2018-2019 year. In order for a license to be issued by the city clerk's office, it must be granted by the common council and the premises must pass certain inspections, including building, health and fire inspections. The premises at 668 North Main Street has not passed building, health and fire inspections, and so the license for the 2018-2019 has not been issued by the city clerk's office. Upon receipt of the renewal paperwork, part of my duties require me to review the applications and licenses for compliance with state law ignorance requirements because of, because the records in the city clerk's office showed the license had not been used for the 2018-2019 year and the premises have been closed since 2017. I provided this information to the clerk who saw direction from council relating to the renewal of the license. Pursuant to direction from the council at their May 28, 2019 meeting, a notice of intent to not renew was given to Ms. Machi notifying her that the council had declared their intention to not renew the license for Machi's Bar located at 668 North Main Street for the 2019-2020 license year and that a hearing would be held tonight, Tuesday, June 11, 2019, at 6:00 p.m. The notice of the intent as to not renew is included with the council's packet. The city clerk will mark this as Exhibit 1. Ms. Machi picked up the notice of intent to not renew at the office at the city clerk in person on June 4, 2019, as shown by the notation on Exhibit 1.
At this time, you'll be swearing in Ms. Machi, correct?
Well, she may ask questions or the council may ask questions of Ms. Jaikle first.
Okay. Do you have any questions for the deputy city clerk?
No, I do not.
Counsel.
Now she gets to be sworn in and testify. Okay. Do you swear that the testimony that you are going to give regarding this matter shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
So my name is Amy Machi. I reside at 1378 Lake Breeze Road here in Ashkosh. And you was right, I did get the bar back in July of 2017. I had sold it on a land contract. I didn't have any, I did, I wanted to sell it. I did not want to reopen it. And so in 2017, I listed with Kyle Keogh in September. In October, the city deemed that the building, that the roof was bad, so I had a new roof put on. And then in January of 2018, there was vandalism and they came in, they broke the water main and I had five feet of water in the basement, and it's a short basement. So it all froze, so it pushed everything up. So then that started the process of demoing. So we had to demo the apartment above and we demoed the bar, which it's just a vacant building at this time. I went to the bank because I ran out of money and then I found out that my previous Don Walker, who had purchased the building from me, had federal tax liens. So in May, promptly after I realized that I would need to foreclose the land contract to take the title and resell the property, I went to my attorneys Russ Ruff and Emily Dunham to start that process. The foreclosure was filed on 6/12/18. It could not be a strict foreclosure as Mr. Walker had several liens on the property, including federal tax liens, which must follow federal foreclosure procedure, which, among other things, requires a sheriff's sale of the property and a mandatory 120-day right of redemption after the foreclosure sale. I was told that this would be a lengthy process and it really was. Mr. Walker's former spouse objected to the foreclosure and negotiations and settlement was made, which required that an amended summons and complaint be filed and served again on 10/11/18 on the remaining seven defendants, which included the IRS, the Wisconsin Department of Revenue and the Attorney General. The foreclosure judgment was received as soon as possible after all the defendants were served and the mandatory waiting times had passed. The sheriff's sale was held on 2/5/19, which was the first sale after the shortest mandatory redemption period legally available at five weeks. The sale was confirmed by the court on 2/27/19, and again, the first court date we could get and the property was immediately marketed. The City of Ashkosh, I called the redevelopment authority. I thought maybe they would like to purchase it because I was aware of the seven empty lots on Jefferson Street. So I contacted them in, at the end of February, and on March 25, 2019, I signed a contract or I, I accepted an offer. And their contingency was that they were going to go in front of the redevelopment authority on May 14, and at that time, it was rejected. Since Mr. Walker relinquished the property, I have invested over $95,000 in repairs and upkeep on this property. We have not had the legal ability to sell this property until the foreclosure was complete and all the liens removed from the property, which I will finally have a clear title on June 19. Now finally, we have an opportunity to recoup a small fraction of what I have invested in this property. So now here I am again for the third year requesting to have my liquor license renewed. At this time, since they rejected, the RDA did, May 14, I have two offers to purchase, which I brought both of them with me tonight. The one offer that I accepted is from a gentleman that lives in Florida and he is being represented by Kelly Schwab. So she has some details that she could share with the council, which this new buyer wants to do to the property. So that's where I'm at.
Does council have questions for Ms. Machi?
Just one.
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. So the, the building is, there's no bar in it?
There's nothing. It's an empty shell.
It's an empty shell at this point.
Yes.
So.
Yeah, I had vandalism and then there was somebody that ran into like the hut behind, so we had to take that out.
Okay.
We put a new roof on, we put new heaters in. I haven't had any inspections because there's really nothing to expect.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to clarify that.
I just had a follow-up question. You indicated that on March 25, there was an offer that was accepted by the city. At this time, can we call Mr. Davis or shall we call the other parties?
I would let her, yeah, finish her testimony and presentation first.
Okay. I think I'm pretty much done.
Did you want Ms. Schwab to testify on your behalf as well?
Yes, I do, if you guys are ready for her.
Okay. And the clerk will swear in Ms., is it Gail Schwab? I'm sorry, Kelly.
Kelly Schwab.
Do you swear that the testimony that you shall give regarding this matter is the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. If you would state your name and address for the record.
Kelly Schwab, 303 Pearl Avenue, Suite A, Ashkosh, Wisconsin, 54901. I am an attorney in the City of Ashkosh and I currently represent the individual Christopher Brown, who has an accepted offer to purchase on this property. The offer to purchase is contingent upon him being granted or being able to obtain a liquor license for the property. A little background about my client, he is a commercial real estate owner in the Sarasota Siesta Key area. He also owns several restaurants and bars in that area. He currently has seven restaurants in that area and also a nightclub in downtown Sarasota. He's originally from Wisconsin and wants to come back and do a project here. With the offer to purchase that he has submitted, he intends to do substantial improvements to the property. He's looking at doing a more high-end bar that would potentially have some food options. He's looking at putting a significant investment into the property and looks at this as a good opportunity for the city, for the Main Street, and is excited about getting involved in the community and doing an investment that could benefit everyone.
Councilmember Miller.
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Schwab, I've known you for years. What's your gut feeling? I don't, I don't want to get into the details of this. I don't think we need to know all the details of the deal, but do you feel pretty good about the closing and its likelihood of closing?
I personally don't know this individual. I've been retained by this individual. The offer to purchase is structured in a way that it will close by, it's scheduled to close by July 1, and there will be a substantial down payment of earnest money within five days as the contract is drafted. So as long as the contract's fulfilled, and we should know that in the next five days, the entire purchase price will be paid as earnest money. So it's a pretty strong offer as long as he complies and we should know that within the first five days of the contract. And it was accepted yesterday.
Thank you very much.
Councilmember Muggerower.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Let me make one note here. I just want to clarify a term you used or part of the language of the agreement that the applicant has with the potential buyer. The offer is subject to, or contingent upon, the potential, the potential buyer obtaining a liquor license, not that the liquor license is part of this agreement, but just obtaining one. Is that correct?
He would need to have a liquor license in order for the offer to purchase to go to fruition and go to closing. So he intends to operate it as a bar, restaurant, and he would need to have the liquor license in order for the offer to purchase to close.
Sure. The part that I'm just trying to clarify, his intent or not, just the part that it needs, he needs to have a liquor license to close, that's, that's the way your offer is written?
It's contingent upon him obtaining a liquor license is how it's.
Prior to closing.
Correct.
Just want to make sure we're on the same page because we do have liquor license available that they can obtain through the normal process. Just want to make sure we're on the same page as to what the potential offer is, is and is not saying. So, thank you.
Councilmember Pascal.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Schwab, what is the timeline for the, for the potential new owner in order to turn around the premise into being a functioning establishment?
We have a closing date of July 1. Like I said, the earnest money is due within five days of yesterday. And through my conversations with him, he's looking at starting renovations and starting improvements on the building almost immediately. He's working with my office and obtaining local contacts for contractors and consultants that can work with him. He has extensive experience in the hospitality industry, but not specifically in Wisconsin. So he's working with my office to find local individuals, contractors and consultants that can work with him. But his intention would be to start right away.
Would it be the understanding that if the license is maintained to this property, that, that the understanding is that the premise would be, would be a functioning establishment within the next year?
That was my understanding from the conversations. It, whatever amount of time it would take to get the work done, but he's looking at moving forward quickly on this using contractors. He would like to get it open as quickly as possible since he has the money invested.
All right. Thank you.
Any further questions by council?
Not for Ms. Schwab.
All right. Does Ms. Machi have another representative here?
No, I just, oh, I'm sorry.
Clerk, can you swear in?
Do you swear that the testimony that you shall give regarding this matter shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay. If you would state your name and address for the record.
Yep, my name is Kyle Keogh. My address is 2830 Ruchfield Drive in Ashkosh. I'm the Realtor representing the sale of the bar right now to give some additional information for it. We not only have the one offer accepted, there is a secondary offer accepted as well too, that if anything were to fall through with the first offer, the secondary offer is available there to take over. Also requiring the liquor license, which would be important. And this was all done within the last few weeks. When we went to the redevelopment meeting, we had expectations that during the redevelopment meeting that the city was going to approve it just because of its location next to the other redevelopment land. After it was found or not approved during that time, I worked hard to get it sold during that time. We had multiple showings on the property, people interested in running it as a tavern, keeping it, continuing to run it as a tavern, understanding the amount of work that was needed. Buyers were brought through the property and they understand the scope of what is necessary. I understand the bar does need rehab, but there has been multiple things that have been done to it, such as the roof, the furnaces, the electrical, the plumbing. When things happened to it, it was torn apart, but to the next buyer, it is a blank canvas. So with much opportunity and the ability to move Main Street a little bit further down to continue to expand, having nice, high-end places, I think would be beneficial not only for the seller in this case, the buyer, and then also the city.
Does council have any questions of Mr. Keogh? Do we have anyone else? Oh, excuse me. Councilmember Pascal.
Similar to my question to Ms. Schwab is, what's the timeline for that, that second?
The secondary? It would be similar. The timeframe would start as soon as it's set to close, which would be similar timeframe to the original one as well too, that as soon as it were to close, that rehab would start. From my understanding, from that buyer, the information that I do have is that they have done a similar project already in the City of Ashkosh in which they rehabbed a bar. They're leasing that bar currently and the intent is to own their own place instead of leasing. So they've already done a project that is similar to the rehab of what this property is. So they are understanding of what to expect if, if they were to be made in primary.
Councilmember Miller.
Thank you. My, my question isn't for you, it's, it's for staff. I'm not real excited about pulling this license, you know, given everything that's going on. Is there any type of bull you want to put on this that if something isn't done?
We're actually in the middle of the hearing and testimony.
We're in deliberation and actually the notice of intention to not renew was given at the direction of the council, not at staffs.
Okay. Thank you.
So do you have any questions?
I don't, thank you. Sorry about that.
And then do we have anyone else? Ms. Machi? Okay, at this time, do we have any documents that have been presented into the record?
I did bring, I both opened my office to purchase. If you'd like to see those.
If you'd like to give those to the clerk, or the officer can give those to the clerk.
It happens to be accepted on from the bottom one, the secondary.
Can I ask a quick question before we accept those? Do, those are matter of public record the moment we accept those. Are you sure you want to give those to us?
They're also confidential.
They're also confidential.
That's a matter of public record the moment they're handed.
Yeah. If you give it to us. I think they justify enough that there is offer.
I'm sorry, if you're going to talk, we need you to step up and be sworn in.
Yes, can you please step up to be sworn in?
For the applicant, for you. You're the applicant here.
Yes, I am.
Are those documents that you want to hand to us right now?
No, I guess not.
And the other gentleman, did you wish to be sworn in? Are you asking him to speak on your behalf?
No, no.
Okay.
Kelly said that her client said it was fine. I can submit the accepted offer, if you'd like.
If the council would like that?
Yes.
I had the same question, you know? I didn't know what I...
Just want to make sure.
This will be marked Exhibit 2.
Thank you.
Are there enough copies for each council member?
I apologize, there's only one copy there.
Okay. We can handle that.
Councilmember Pechal.
So just for clarification, Exhibit 2 is the accepted offer that is of the person who's being represented by Mrs. Schwab?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Thank you. Mr. Brown.
So we can take a moment here and have council look at that and pass it down? Just one question, Ms. Machi. Did it occur that you might want to submit those documents ahead of time, so that council could see them?
We had talked about it today. We just signed it last night late, and I really didn't know what I could, you know? I didn't know what I could submit and what I couldn't. So I do apologize. I think that's why Kelly was so gracious to come for her client.
Does this document need to be notarized, or is it legal once both parties are signing the document, as a contract? Okay.
Is there any other documentation that you'd like to submit?
No, not at this time, thank you.
At this time, would it be appropriate to ask Mr. Davis to address the earlier accepted offer, or?
If you'd like him to.
Sure. Mr. Davis?
Do you swear that the testimony that you shall give regarding this matter shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Will you please state your name and address?
Alan Davis, 215 Church.
Mr. Davis, Ms. Machi indicated there was an earlier accepted offer by the city from March 25th. Can you share any more detail on that?
The RDA is actually the party that was involved. The RDA has purchased several properties on Jefferson and expressed interest in gaining access to Main Street, and this was a property that fronts on Main Street that would also provide access to those lots on Jefferson. When we approached the property owner, they were willing to accept the offer that staff provided to her, but there was the contingency that RDA had to approve that. When we took it to the RDA, they debated that purchase and declined.
Was there any reference to the... And obviously, I was there at this meeting. Was there any reference to the need or renewal or non-renewal of the liquor license in that discussion, if you recall?
The liquor license, I do not recall if it came up. I know we knew it was a bar, and we thought the liquor license was coming with the bar, but with the purchase of the property by the RDA, it would have just gone into the pool. So the RDA wasn't looking to retain the liquor license, if that's...
I wouldn't think we would need that.
My expectation is it would have gone into the pool, just like the other liquor licenses that we obtained as time has gone by through the RDA.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Pechal.
What were the reasons as to why the RDA passed on the property and the purchase?
It wasn't contiguous enough to the other parcels that were available. There's still another parcel to the south to really connect to the other property available on Main Street, and it's undetermined as to whether that parcel could be obtained. And this parcel by itself didn't serve enough of a purpose to warrant the acquisition.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other council members? All right. Thank you.
I have a question for the deputy city attorney. Can we ask her to step back up and... The city attorney, deputized city clerk, sorry. It's been a long... It's been a long one already.
That's okay.
She's already sworn in, she doesn't need to be?
Correct.
Thank you. If you could give us a reminder as to, especially within the confines of this potential deal, they need a liquor license to close on the property. What is the standard or rough estimate of time that it takes to apply for and be granted a liquor license? And then, part two is, how many liquor licenses do we have available at this exact moment?
Sure. The paperwork has to be on file 15 days before the council meets, okay? And that's state statute. And we have two licenses available. We have a reserve license, and as of July, we'll have another license.
And the process for which one goes through to obtain a license, other than the health inspections and all those other things, background check within the police department-type stuff?
Background check, taxes, health, fire. They have to meet some other requirements from the state.
And just because during the sale of a property, there's a liquor license attached to it, and it gets sold, that new person still has to go through the same process to obtain the license. And so we don't know whether or not the potential buyer has the ability to pass that test at this moment.
All right, then. So at this time, if we could have your final statement, if you would like to make a final statement, Ms. Machi?
Well, I've been sitting here, and I've been listening to, you know, you talking about small businesses, and I think it's a great location. I think it would be great to have a new establishment on North Main Street, and I believe in small business.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have no one else. We'll declare the hearing closed. Now go into council deliberation. Need a motion and a second for deliberation.
So moved on 19-349.
Second.
Discussion. Councilmember Crowsey.
I'm just a little confused. It says staff recommends non-renewal, and where did the non-renewal opinion come from?
We actually recommended non-renewal.
When was that recommended?
At the May 28th council meeting.
So we didn't have that information of an accepted offer?
Right. That just came in.
No, it came apparently yesterday.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Miller.
Thank you, Mayor. In light of all the new circumstances, I don't see why we would want to hamper the sale. It sounds like she's got the ball rolling, and I don't think we should stand in the way. So if they have to go through all the same requirements and everything of, you know, applying for one, I don't want to stand in the way of this. I think she's overcome some bad luck, and I see her real positive here, so.
Deputy Mayor Herman.
Thank you, Mayor. I agree with Councilmember Miller. You know, we've had these hearings, I've had probably five, six since I've been on council. Most of them are no sale pending, and it's always the Realtor says, "Well, I can't sell the private property without the liquor license." In this case, it's contingent on the sale, and there are two legitimate offers, from what it sounds like. And denying the liquor license would probably just add another step in the process. That would make it harder to sell it, maybe at this point, because they wouldn't want to have to take that next step, because what happens within the meantime, one wouldn't become available. So I'd be inclined to at least give it one full more year, and if there was no development there from the buyer, it would come back to council anyways, and we could pull it down. At least, we're giving them the opportunity to sell, opportunity for a new developer to come in, develop the property, do what he says he's going to do, and then, again, if nothing happens, we can always take the license then. So, you know, at the time we forwarded this, we did not have that information, and it sounds like it's a viable property that's ready to be sold. I'll support renewing the license.
Anyone else? So to renew the license, we would need a motion?
You have the motion on the floor.
To be amended.
Yeah, we would have a motion to amend the resolution at the very end of the resolution. We have the determination is based on the following findings of the council, basically, whatever your findings are, that the waiver is appropriate in this circumstance. And I provided a memo in your packet this evening, that knowing that Ms. Machi had come in, that had some examples, not knowing exactly what the testimony was going to be, I, you know, roughed it out, but it would be appropriate to have someone who would like to renew the license, to move, to amend the resolution, to include whatever the appropriate findings are similar to those that I provided you on that memo this evening.
Councilmember Mookerauer.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The one thing that concerns me is within the offer, the addendum A, offer's contingent upon a buyer obtaining a liquor license from the city of Oshkosh prior to the time set for closing, obtaining a liquor license. If the buyer's unable to do so, yada, yada, yada. They have to pass building, health, and safety inspections before they are given a liquor license.
They also, they could not obtain it prior to that time, because they don't own the premises yet.
That's my...
So they actually cannot obtain the license prior to closing.
And so while I know it's nuances, it is a legal agreement, and any wiggle room is cause for getting out of a real estate deal, of course. And so I have concerns with how that is worded and the impact it has on our decision, because the buyer does not have the ability to obtain a liquor license before closing. So using the closing date as the reason for, unless the city attorney is going to tell me I'm wrong.
Wait.
Yep.
Were we thinking? I think actually, they could transfer...
Yes.
Because it's a transfer of an agent.
Yes.
So as long as there was a transfer, but it would require the publication yet. And so there still is a timeline on that.
Okay.
And the background checks would need to be done. The inspections of the premises would not.
So it would come to council, you guys would grant it, and I would hold up until it's met all the requirements before it was issued.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification. Thank you.
Sorry about that.
Deputy Mayor Herman.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to amend Resolution 19-349 to include the following findings that the applicant's license has presented, evidence to the council that there is an accepted offer for the property that is contingent upon maintenance of the liquor license. The applicant, Lacy, testified that she has an offer for purchase of the property from a person, business, who will purchase and redevelop the property into a use requiring a liquor license. That Ms. Machi's testified that there is interest of purchaser for the property, intend to purchase and redevelop the property into use, requiring a liquor license. And I don't have the data on closing on the property, but I guess we don't need all that at this point, just amending the resolution that we approve a liquor license, that there's enough finding that the applicant has presented that the property will be sold with the intention of it to be remaining a liquor establishment in the city of Oshkosh under our ordinances.
Would we also then add that final finding, redevelopment is expected to occur by or be completed by? June 30th?
Well, it would be one year from the date of possibly issuance, right? Would that be the correct date?
I would keep it on the license year, so June 30th.
Okay. So do you want that as part of the resolution, redevelopment is expected to occur by?
It's up to you guys now.
Yes.
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 Yes, deputy.
Yes. A year from the date of issuance, right?
June 30th.
June 30th of 2020.
And if I may, I know this may add a bit of a monkey wrench to it, could we also ask the applicant that if for some reason that deal fell through, I don't know, within the next period of months, that they would just willingly surrender? Or are we back into partial-year discussion?
You are granting the license for a license year. They can willingly surrender, but in order for us to take it, it would require a revocation hearing.
Even if they voluntarily surrender?
No.
Nope, not?
If they can voluntarily surrender it, but for the city to take it involuntarily, it would require a hearing. Just, Councilmember, or Deputy Mayor Herman?
Yes.
We had the closing as July 1st, if you would like to include that from the testimony. I didn't... You said you didn't have the...
Sure. I'm sorry. I didn't know if we needed that specifically, but...
Again, it's up to you guys.
No, that's fine. July 1st, 2019.
For the record. Councilmember Pechal.
Sure. So question, City Attorney Lawrence, do we have to approve the license for a year?
Yes.
So that's statute?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. So we have the motion?
I second.
Second. Any further discussion? All right. So we'll be calling the roll on?
The amendment.
The amendment.
Crowsey?
Aye.
Pechal?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Mookerauer?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Carried six.
All right. Deputy Mayor Herman.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to, with the amended resolution, to approve liquor license under Resolution 19-349 for 668 North Main Street.
Second.
Any discussion?
Can I just ask you one more question? I know Angie said that I need to pay the money for the...
The testimony's technically, this is the council part. Yeah. We'll just have you and talk to Angie, thanks.
All right.
All right. So a yes vote on the resolution as amended, approves the license, no, is non-renewal. All right? So if we could please take the roll.
Crowsey?
Aye.
Pechal?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Mookerauer?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Carried six.
All right. Well, since the applicant was here, the clerk doesn't need to... Well, I guess he will still send a written applicant.
Mm-hmm.
All right. We will now return to the regular agenda. Resolution 19-350, support go-transit application for Section 5339B, federal program funding for fueling station replacement. I believe Mr. Collins is here to address that. Councilmembers have questions, or who may want to describe what that's for?
Sure. I can just tell you what it is, and if you have any questions. But anyway, it's just supporting our... We're filing a grant to replace our fuel station at the transit center, which is 1980. at the Transit Center, which is 1980s, so it's well past its useful life. So we're going to apply for a federal grant, which would be 80/20, so the federal share would be 80 percent, the local share would be 20 percent, and it'll be in our CIP for the coming year. Probably not a high likelihood that we'll get that, as they're mostly funding buses right now, but at least we'll take a swing at it.
Thank you. Councilmember Mugerower.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to say thank you. You and your staff do a fantastic job looking for grants, trying to get every dollar out of the federal government possible. Keep trying to do that. I support it 100 percent. I know when we did a walkthrough of the facility shortly after I became a councilmember a year ago, that was one of the things you pointed out to me, was that refueling station, how inefficient, and also, safety and the hazards that it poses, or could pose in the future. So completely supportive of it, and keep doing the good work on trying to find all those grants that we can possibly apply for.
Thanks.
Thank you. All right. We could have a roll call on that.
Crowsey.
Aye.
Peschel.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Mugerower.
Aye.
Paul Mary.
Aye.
Carried six.
Next, 19-351, approve tax increment district number 36 project plan, designate tax increment district number 36 boundaries, and to create the tax increment district number 36 for merge redevelopment. Do we have anyone registered to speak on this?
No, we do not.
All right. Take a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Deputy Mayor Herman.
Thank you, Mayor. I support this resolution. I think it's an exciting project that's possibly coming in. City of Oshkosh, as it moves forward, it's one of the first projects since I've been on council that an outside developer is looking at the city, and I think it's from all the positive things we've done the last many years here in the city, since I've been on council and other councilmembers also been here. So it's a great opportunity for us to enhance a blighted area of the city on Marion and Jackson, so I'm supportive of approving this tax increment. It's a great opportunity for the city. Thank you.
Mr. Davis, just a quick question on this one. Would this, would this tax increment district kind of complete what we started many years ago with Marion Road? Would this kind of finish that off?
Yes. The RDA owns three parcels, and this tax increment finance district encompasses the last three parcels.
Excellent. Excellent. Thank you. Councilmember Mugerower.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Davis, don't walk too far, just for the people at home. So we're going to take, well, not we, merge, it's going to take just under six acres of blighted area and turn it into a multi-use, commercial, mixed-use, residential improvement. It's, it should be a gem down there. I'm fully supportive of it. Can you just remind the people at home how much we're going to put into this to help, as well as then the anticipated value afterwards?
Yes. This would be a pay-go TIF, and if you recall, the way pay-go TIFs work is that the developer has to make the investment, and it has to be assessed, and then we have to collect that tax revenue before we return any of that. Right now, we would return about 90 percent of the tax, taxes paid on those parcels for somewhere around 19 years, depending on how the values turn out. Right now, we've projected that value to be about $26 million.
Very good. That's all I have.
All right. Councilmember Peschel.
Bless you.
Thank you.
My, my question revolves around the definition of blighted. So I remember when we created, when we first created this TIF, and at that time, it was very much a blighted area. There was a whole slew of industrial uses, environmental remediation that needed to take place at that time before we could do anything that currently exists at that site. Correct? With that, I don't know if you were here at that time.
That's my understanding of the history, yes.
So how does the way it looks today still equal blighted?
Looks can be deceiving.
Everything under the ground is still under the ground, so we still have the contamination,
the poor soils, and the unknown geotechnical conditions there. So the developer's going to have to do quite a bit of work to satisfy the DNR when it comes to remediating those sites and capping those sites as appropriate for the health and safety of the citizens of Oshkosh. So nothing has changed under the ground at this point in time. One of them, actually, parcel H, has a cap on it. They're hoping to build on that, the planned pad that went along with that. If that continues, that'll probably be the easiest parcel to do, to complete, but the one at the river and the one kind of by the water tower, those still have to be completely remediated.
My follow-up question would be then, when, so we've, we've had this TIF open for however many years it's been open. Typically, they're used to, to build up the infrastructure for the site so it's more developable and everything. Why, why is there a reason why we couldn't use, why we didn't use that TIF earlier to take care of these other remediation issues that exist?
Remediation comes down to a site-specific solution, so you have to know what the building pad is going to look like, what the parking cap is going to be, where the landscaping's going to be. All that has to be designed in comparison to what the actual conditions are, and I don't have a crystal ball good enough to, to fix all the potential remediation needs of a developer at all. I mean, it's really custom-designed to the development.
So what I, what I, what I think I'm understanding you saying is that some of these steps take place when we actually have a site plan in place of how, how the parcel is going to be developed?
Yes. A site plan, and building plans, and underground structural components, those all have to be taken into account when it comes to the actual environmental remediation, because all of those involve digging into the soil, and sometimes foundations and geopiers have a bigger impact or a lesser impact, and you really have to know exactly where the site is to know what you have to do to remove the blight.
Okay. Thank you.
Just another follow-up. So as I understand, this is like over 160 units, or are we at 200 for this one? I'm not sure, but in, in your experience and what the city's been experiencing in terms of a shortage of, of housing units and rental units, more specifically, that public benefit of adding to the housing stock, what are some of the other public benefits that this type of incentive, or this specific incentive, would we realize?
You're right. According to their application, it was 240 residential units, and we certainly are encouraging more residential units in the downtown to support downtown businesses, and actually provide locations that a segment of the population would like that isn't available right now. And these range from, say, smaller units to the larger units, but this would be, I mean, I'm no expert in the market analysis they've done, but these are types of units that are not offered in Oshkosh right now, and certainly not in this location. So there's a public benefit to provide those types of units in the city. They've also done a very good job incorporating the Riverwalk and potential kayak launch to the site plan so that people can enjoy the, the public space, the common space, as part of the Riverwalk and their development. Lastly, they're going to be providing additional, some of the incubator-type units for the commercial space that would be available to entrepreneurs, that we really don't have that type of space in the city as well. So there's an economic development component to their project as well.
So it's also actively engaging that newer section of the Riverwalk?
Yes. Yep. Their, their design has several of the properties fronting on the Riverwalk.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. So on 19-351, then, could we please take the roll?
Crowsey.
Aye.
Peschel.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Mugerower.
Aye.
Paul Mary.
Aye.
Carried six.
Resolution 19-352, approve amendment to 2019 operations budget for TIF number 36 for $63,000, merge Marion Road redevelopment. Do we have anyone registered to speak on this?
No, we do not.
We do not. All right. Take a motion in a second on this?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Just a follow-up question, then. What is the amendment to the $63,000 related to?
Those would be the expenses the city incurs in creating the tax increment finance district. We hire consultants to help us out with the plan and the financial analysis and the development agreement, which the council should be seeing in the near future, as well as pays for some miscellaneous costs that we have, and the applicant has made those, made that payment so that we have the money to put into the revenue side as well.
All right. Thank you. If we could please call the roll on 19-352.
Crowsey.
Aye.
Peschel.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Mugerower.
Aye.
Paul Mary.
Aye.
Carried six.
All right. Next, moving on to council discussion, direction of city manager, and future agenda items. Turn it over to the city manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This was held over from the last meeting. I think the idea was to give staff direction to program the new Parks Operation Facility into the five-year CIP. This doesn't solve where the money's coming from. That still is going to be really subject to the direction council gave me regarding the debt management policy, but the idea here is that council would formally direct staff to incorporate that, and you'll see that in a future CIP document. Where that is exactly located will largely depend on the debt management plan. Per the council's direction, you want that direct, that management plan prior to the CIP, so it'll, it'll come together at that time, and, and I'm going to be providing you with a mid-year update that gives you an idea. Councilmember Mugerower is on the Long Range Finance Committee. They received a presentation last week, so we're on our way to providing that debt management element to council. That's really all I have, just general direction, or any other comments?
Deputy Mayor Herman.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to see it move forward. I think I was stated at the last council meeting, and I think when we had the workshop, that continuing to put a Band-Aid on the Parks building and that whole complex just doesn't make sense with where we've gone with our central garage and all our other projects. I think it's important that we get that in the CIP and see if we can fund it in the next five years so that we can build a, a really nice, quality Parks Department, not only for office purposes, but for equipment purposes. We found the savings in the central garage already by keeping the equipment indoors and well-maintained, so I think that just is just an extension, and I think we're talking $5 to $6 million for Parks buildings, so I think we should be looking to move it in forward. Thank you.
Councilmember Mugerower.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. No, completely in line with Deputy Mayor Herman. Let's plug it in, see where, see where it shakes out with how quickly we can accomplish the project. It's an important project. If you haven't had a chance to take a walkthrough there, whether I'm speaking to fellow councilmembers or even a member of the public, the Parks Director or his staff would be happy to show you around that building and show you the condition of it, and it is past time for that project to, to get on our radar and get funded, so I'll welcome seeing it on the CIP.
Councilmember Crowsey.
I'm going to agree with my fellow councilmembers. The building needs to be replaced, replaced probably 10 or 15 years ago. We talked about blighted areas. It's a blighted building. When I toured it, I looked around, and I felt bad for the people that worked in there. I mean, it's 2019, and it should be a modern building that they're working in, so I would support something, and I'd like to see a plan come forward.
Other councilmembers?
I think I have sufficient direction, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Okay. Boards and commissions study, this is simply a placeholder for us to come up with a date on bringing back, as a workshop we previously discussed on boards and commissions. There were several items that we previously discussed, such as whether or not council liaisons continue to be voting participants. There is the discussion of the alternates, which is a separate item on this next, creation of, or potential merging of other boards and commissions. So if we could come up with a date for a workshop on that, perhaps we could have an update on that 2017 study. I don't know that there's really that much to update since that time, unless something has changed.
I think it's a matter of just revisiting it. There were some items that were, I think you've cited most of them right there in terms of, and if any discussion of any new committees, that was also put on hold pending the results of the study, and then that, so there's, I think there's enough to talk about. So just if council wants to give us some dates.
Probably at the earliest, I would think, late July. Do we have other workshops coming up?
I'm not aware of any workshops, except I'm sure Ms. Larson will be wanting to start scheduling budget workshops. 'Tis the season is, is coming, so, but normally, the budget workshops are not at a council meeting. This workshop would likely be just prior to a council meeting, if that's still the council's pleasure.
Deputy Mayor Herman.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess my thinking is, you know, we've spent quite a bit of time in the last year, year and a half with our boards and commissions as far as kind of realigning them and things like that. I guess I would like to see the discussion more go to the alternates that the mayor's proposing, which I think is appropriate on quite a few of our boards. As I said earlier, I, I think especially on the ones that have budget implications, to make sure that we have quorums at them, to have alternates at. But I, I don't know that we would need to spend a lot of time on relooking at our boards and commissions. I think we got that copy of which ones are required by, by statute, which are required by ordinances, and we did combine a couple, if I remember right. We combined the traffic review and the parking utility, and we combined the landmarks and the Grand Opera House board. That was the building side of that board. So we've, we've already kind of consolidated a couple of boards. I don't know if any other councilmembers or the mayor are thinking of consolidating some other boards, or if it's more of the discussion on alternates on certain boards.
No, that's like a separate issue. I believe, Councilmember Peschel, would you like to share anything from the earlier traffic discussion?
In regards to alternates?
No, in regards to whether or not there's any interest in further discussion of merging or alternates, either one?
Well, I can talk about the alternates after the alternates, but I would, I guess I'd like to say something relates, related to this, this topic. So I'm going to play the new person on the roll. You don't get to do it this time, unless you want it.
No, it's all you.
I think there's merit to having a continued discussion about boards and commissions, whether there's the creation of merging of them, creating new ones, which I know has come up in conversation several times over the last couple of years as well. So I think even though that, that study took place in 2017, it's still relevant to discuss today in 2019, so, and I think having conversation about those and what steps we could take or not take is, is, you know, part of what our deliberations are about, so I don't think it hurts to discuss it.
Councilmember Mugerower.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I guess I'm in thought process, I'm leaning a little bit more towards what Deputy Mayor Herman was, was commenting on, that in regards to the status of the boards and commissions merging or not, I think we, there has been some changes in the last 18 months-ish. I think it's a great idea, number 37 on the docket tonight, to discuss and hopefully add some alternates to the ones who, who need them or could use them. But in general, for just another workshop to discuss the boards and commissions and the study itself, I don't know. I guess I'd want some more information as to what the intended outcomes are, are hoping to be, before, before I get on board with a workshop, just for the sake of having one. I want, want to make sure it's substantive, and we have a, we have a goal in mind to come out of that workshop.
Councilmember Peschel.
Sure. Earlier this even, evening, we had a quick recess, and I took that as a, as a time to reflect upon how this, what led to that quick recess, how that might... how that might be captured and part of this conversation. It sounds, and I bring this back to this, this quality of conversation about our processes and, and, you know, we're not all on the same page here in regards to this, which in my mind is sometimes the best time to talk about boards and commissions. And in my opinion, this also brings, brings forward the opportunity to talk about appointments, process of appointments, and how we deal with that, how we deal with the disagreement on that process. I think this is a prime time for us to be talking about boards and commissions because histori, we have, we have created a little bit of history tonight. And, and I think it's, I think it's worth having that conversation. I'm thinking there's a much well-rounded conversation about just whether boards are merged, all, all of this stuff together as part of that, that process. So bigger picture.
Councilmember Miller.
Thank you, Mayor. Being the new guy, I get to play the card after you. But I, I couldn't agree with Councilmember Pascal more. I, I do think this is an opportunity for all of us to get on the same page. I think the word workshop scares everybody. I, I would look at this as maybe a team-building experience and an opportunity to sit down and, and share some views and everything. So, so yeah, I, I don't know if I, we need a workshop, I don't know what, what that exactly means. But I, I think some type of forum, is that, yeah. But I, I certainly agree with Councilmember Pascal, so.
City Manager.
The purpose of a workshop is really, is not to necessarily take action, but have an in-depth discussion so that you can provide staff with some additional direction at a later time. I think the workshops are intended typically not to put the council under the gun to, to make a decision, but rather take the information in, ask appropriate questions, and then reflect on it for, for future action. There were some issues that regarding possible creation, I think Councilmember Pascal kind of hinted at it, but there were some issues that were put on the back burner pending the final results of the board and commission study. Those never came back forward, and I think it's probably appropriate that they get discussed because I would have an obligation to bring it forward to you anyway. Specifically, as a result of the Diversity Coordinator Report that I did back in twenty-seventeen, there was a discussion about a possible creation of a Human Relations Commission or something similar. That went to the back burner because we wanted to study and see if we could trim down our boards and commissions. So it's trimming, it's also adding, and, and also obviously some other issues as well. So I think having the report out there for council to take a look at, we can get those reports to council if.
I believe you are, you're all received that, that study.
All right, good, and Diane did her thing, I'll thank her. But certainly give council an opportunity, because there's some new members and you may want to have that discussion.
So then dates before the end of July as we enter into budget season?
There are two coun, the two council meetings are July ninth and twenty-third. I suspect because there's a fifth Tuesday, I, I would suspect that Ms. Larson is probably eyeballing that fifth Tuesday for your first budget workshop. So I would ask that you not pick that date because, but to mark it on your calendar, because she's probably going to ask you to do that date anyway. I think she may have, Trina may have already left. But the twenty-third or the ninth would certainly be appropriate. I think, you know, if the council has a report, you, you can really do it anytime. So just tell us what your pleasure is.
I prefer the twenty-third.
Twenty-third, it's okay.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
You may use your phone.
It is EAA week, that's, that would be the only downside, but we're going to be here anyways.
Does anybody have obligations with the EAA that night? I think you're all going to be there.
Unless we get invited to some open.
The concert's typically Monday night.
No, I know, but I mean, they're going to do some city recognition, I know, and some open times.
Probably be during the day.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's fine, we can schedule twenty-third.
Seven twenty?
Five P.M.?
Sure.
Yep.
Thank you very much.
And if councilmembers would like to submit through the city manager or myself, Ms. Larson, specific interests in the discussion on that, certainly now we can move on to number thirty-seven. Survey results, and this would be back to the city manager on the boards and commissions alternates, as having alternates. I believe Diane.
Diane provided a copy. There were probably a couple more than I anticipated that hadn't had an opportunity to discuss it yet. But I think that the key thing is every board and commission that currently does not have an alternate, all indicated an interest in, in having alternates. Nobody said they would be interested in not having alternates. And the ones that currently have them, do like them. And I don't, I don't, I'm not sure how the Traffic Board went, Councilmember Pascal.
The general consensus of the Traffic and Parking Review Board was in favor of that. There was one, one member who expressed a concern, not, not related to that board, but related to how that someone's, the level of involvement of the alternate when they were to step in, the uncomfortability of whether they would be trained or in, you know, in the understanding of that. So we did discuss, you know, that all alternates would be invited to all meetings and, you know, would be, in essence, schooled on, on the issues of what's going on. They provide the same information that, that every other board member would get.
Yeah, and every alternate receives the same information, is invited and expected to come because of the possibility somebody may not be there, so very much so. The only unanswered question, the Landmarks Commission currently provides for three alternates. And I would assume that.
We're not sure the history of as to how they ended up with three, are we?
They just had three. Oh, oh, excuse me, I think I might be partially to blame for that. You know, when we were merging the Landmarks Commission and the Grand Opera House Advisory Board, I think we added an additional alternate just because we wanted to be, we wanted to accommodate the merging of the two families so that we didn't necessarily lose anybody. That was, that was the reason. It, it just came to me, so it was more about accommodating that, that friendly merger. So council.
So then we probably need to update this May fourteenth, twenty-nineteen, because it says Landmarks is six plus two alternates. So if we have three, maybe that, is that, was that done by ordinance or?
We did adopt it by ordinance because we, we had to reappoint people because they were, there was a brand-new group. I'm not sure if that means that there's two, if there's one opening or not. But I will double-check that.
All right, thank you. Next is direction on open council seat process. Council will recall, there was a request to bring this back for discussion.
Excuse me, Madam Mayor. So the direction would be to provide council with a resolution or the appropriate document to add alternates to the, to the boards? Okay, I just, I knew that was a consensus, but I just.
Up to two, I believe.
Up to two, very good, thank you, I apologize.
Deputy Mayor Herman.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess to open up the discussion, I, I had a couple of emails from citizens after we went through the last process. And there were just some suggestions. One is if there's viable candidates and there's an open seat, would, would we just, instead of appointing someone, the fourth person that finished fourth in the balloting would automatically get the open council seat? They thought that was a more fair way, because that way the citizens have already weighed in a little bit on the appointment by voting for that person, even though he did not get the top three votes, knowing, you know, the possibility that with a mayor position, which would open a council position, that that would be appropriate. But then I heard from other people that, you know, the process you have is, is, is okay. So I think where, where it got a little off track this year was when the discussion came in about would we allow someone to do a videotape ahead of time? And I think that created an issue, because I don't think we've ever approved that in the past. And that might have muddied the water a little bit. Having a special election, I think, is, is not the way to go. And it's, it's costly, we all know that. And the voter turnout would probably be very light, just like it has been for council elections in previous years, unless they're tied to a state election or federal election. So, so I, I, I feel that the process, I could go either way. Appoint somebody from council that council feels comfortable with. Or if we have four candidates and the person that finished fourth automatically, I mean, the one year we had ties, I remember the one year we had ties and we had to use a deck of cards to split the ties. And we got, who won, one, I think, got the two-year term.
Peck and Hall.
Yeah. And, and the other council, council member got the one-year term. So we've done all kinds of different ways. I don't know if we want to be locked into a specific.
City Attorney wants to weigh in, then I'll get to you guys.
Just by statute, it's, you have the ability to appoint. I don't think that, I'd have to look at it closer, but my, my initial gut reaction is you probably don't have the ability to just say, we're automatically, this person wins. You could vote that way and appoint that way.
Okay.
But to change the ordinance and make that a rule might be contrary to statute.
Okay, I didn't look into it that much.
Councilmember Crowsey.
Yeah, that was going to be one of my questions, if that was okay to do. But every year's different during election time. I think this year we had a good pool of, of people that ran. I mean, some years a fourth person might be somebody that's just running on something that's ludicrous. So we might not even want that person. So just to say, we're automatically going to put that fourth person in every time, it's, I think that's a possible error. Another thing I was going to say was, the process really needs to have some kind of an end, because it's like, it just felt like it went on and on and on. And it just felt, it made me feel dirty at a certain point. Because I mean, I, I think Mr. Miller's done a great job and he's proven that he's worthy, you know. But it's just, it just seemed like it, we almost needed to do something like Pick Stones or something, like on Survivor.
I'm just going to weigh in here. There were a couple of things that occurred to me, and that is, we, we seem to have some similar questions for each applicant for these vacant seats. You know, would it be appropriate for us to just add some of those questions specifically to the application? Number one. Number two, I think that things have changed over the years in terms of, you know, digital information and, and online applications. Do we also look at potentially shortening the process? Instead of thirty days, we go down to, I don't know, two weeks before that occurs? I'm not sure if that's logistically feasible. But do we have that as a separate meeting, instead of the reorg meeting? And, and allow for, you know, appropriate time? We never know, we might have three applicants, we might have fifty. And then the other question was about whether or not releasing the names as they come in. So those were a couple of things, and I'm sorry, Mr. Muggerhour, go ahead.
No, thank you, Madam Mayor. Actually, you basically took all three of mine right there, so you kind of stole my thunder a little bit on that one. I happen to agree with, in advance, if we can, if council, council should prepare a questionnaire in advance or something like that, so that we can get some blanket questions out to them to answer in advance for us. Since in this particular case, we weren't really privy to reaching out to them in advance to ask our own questions very much. So I happen to agree with that part of it, logistically, just would have to figure it out a little bit. There, it's not necessarily as easy as it sounds, but I think we could figure something out. Two, the timeline, I think, does need to be shortened, thirty days is too long. I'd be just fine with a two-week window, maybe three. But a two-week window would be more my liking for that particular opening. It's well-known, once it's out there, once the election's over, it's known we have an opening and a vacancy. And we do not need to take upwards of five weeks to get somebody put on, put on this council. I also like the, the idea of a separate meeting to handle that situation. That particular meeting, you know, we, it took, you know, what, a good two-plus hours to get, get through that, which is exactly what it needed to be. To Mr. Crowsey's point, or Councilmember Crowsey's point, it is by nature an uncomfortable situation to be in. That's what we signed up for, that's also what they signed up for. We had a great pool of candidates, but I don't feel bad for any one of them for having to go through that. That is exactly what they, they signed up for and knew was going to come to them as a potential for, for putting their name out there to be up here. So I like those ideas, Madam Mayor, and I'd be completely supportive of something like that. I also think us appointing is the right way to go, not through the process, through the application process, not using some sort of, you know, automatic fourth person or anything like that. That the hiring process that we went through is, is the right one.
And it, it had also occurred to me too, that on the application itself, rather than us doing this, allowing a video presentation to take the place of what we allow as someone to present in person, you know, I, I think it could potentially be simply solved by putting a box that says, if you would like council to view this video clip online at whatever link, they could prepare that ahead of time. And then it's also, because the application is public, that link is public, and there's not, I mean, we could probably split hairs over that. But I think we did, as Deputy Mayor said, get a little derailed on the whole video discussion.
Sure.
Councilmember Pascal.
Sure. I actually suggested that we set a, a uniform set of questions when we were discussing the process initially. So as much as I, though I did not ask very many questions during that time, it's partially because there wasn't a level of consistency with that. Not everyone got asked all the same questions. And that was one of the things that, when I made my decision, I went off of what was in front of me and, and the process at hand. So I completely agree that we should have a uniform set of questions. I think that's how a lot of businesses and entities and companies follow a process in, in, in doing their hires. So, and in this case, we were hiring someone to be appointed to this position. So I do not agree that the fourth person should be automatically appointed to that. I think that sets, doesn't set the right precedent to the taxpayers. Each taxpayer has a different opinion on that. But I think the process of getting elected determines who, who ends up representing on here, on, on this board. And in that process, electors also choose who they don't want to be serving on that board, on this board. So, so that falls to us to make that decision. Would you like?
Oh, no, I was just going to say, I think staff is looking for an ordinance recommendation on this. Councilmember Crowsey.
I just wanted to say I supported the idea of a standardized set of questions too, but I still like the idea of the eye test, asking the questions in person. So I mean, people can look great on paper, but once you get them in front of you, it's the real, the real test. And people can prepare questions and sound as good as they want to be with the prepared time.
Councilmember Pascal.
Sure, so I, I think we're, we're in a roundabout way saying the same thing. I'm not saying that, that, that we shouldn't have been asked, shouldn't have not been allowed to ask questions. But I think there's some uniform questions that we all want answered. By asking those upfront, we get those. It still allows for the flexibility of us to be able, you know, agreed, have that eye-to-eye, see how they respond, that type of stuff, so completely.
City Attorney.
Just as to the ordinance change, I think the only one that would actually require an ordinance change would be the reduction of the time from thirty days to two weeks. And if the consensus is that, I can prepare that.
Councilmember Pascal.
Sure. I would agree with that. I also would like to see, just like I would like to see with boards and commissions, that application be more web-based and more so not a, not a PDF or, or a document, something where they get to fill in.
Online?
Online and everything. I think that makes it much easier in this day and age for people to provide that. And also allow, you know, if that interface works, also allow for them to be able to provide any attachments or supporting documents to that as well.
Councilmember Muggerhour.
Thank you. I'm all for creating and providing multiple avenues for people to apply, absolutely. But I wouldn't want to, for lack of better, for lack of a poorer word or a bad word, handicap or hold somebody back from applying because they don't have access to those means. So any and all methods should be available. The one other thing that I've neglected to mention, one of my thoughts. The one other thing that I've neglected to mention, one of my thoughts is, and city staff may want to weigh in on this one, I believe the moment the application is turned in, it's a matter of public record, and it should be available to us immediately, that it should not be held back until whenever the window closes. That it, tonight had that piece of paper been handed over and officially accepted, that was a public record during the liquor hearing, liquor license hearing, and available to anybody almost immediately, within reason, and I don't see the harm in doing so. When we pull out papers in December, our name is available to anybody to come down to City Hall and take a look and see who pulled papers, and I don't view that process as any different than the appointment process.
City Attorney.
And we have no objection to that, it was just that we had not told people that. And so, if that's the direction, we would like to be able to tell people that so that they are not surprised when it's released. And if that's, that's the direction in the future, that wouldn't require an ordinance change, it would just be something when we advertise it, we would let people know that so that it's, it's clear.
Good.
Deputy Mayor Herman.
Thank you. So, I think the consensus of councils, we can move on, I think, is to shorten it to two weeks. I'd like to see something in the ordinance, maybe a two-week application process, maybe some form questions that either council puts together ahead of time or with some help of staff, appropriate questions that should be asked, they're standardized for all candidates, and I think go forward. I mean, I was not advocating the fourth vote, just so everybody knows, that was just a citizen's comment to me, I just threw it out there, because I told them I would. Thank you.
City Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Perhaps with respect to the question suggestion, what I'll do is I'll ask staff to take a look at the video from the, from the meeting and see if we can identify some, some common themed questions, and we can get them together, provide them to you, so we can, just if we're going to put something online, it would make sense to just get some consensus on that. Yeah, you don't know when you're going to have a vacancy, but when you do, you don't want to sit there and just have a meeting about, okay, which questions do you want? And I'd rather have that ready.
Right, no, I think that makes...
And, you know, as the city attorney said, the only thing that requires the ordinance change is that 30 days to two weeks, and council can change this any time, but if there is a vacancy, we'd want to be able to respond quickly so you can fill the vacancy promptly. So, I'll have staff look at that, and we'll, we'll get it over to you, and you can give us some feedback, and, but if we have some common themed questions, I think you've already decided what those questions are, you just, you just have to get them, you know, on a piece of paper for y'all to look at.
Great. And Deputy Mayor Herman has a brief comment.
Just, did you do citizen statements?
No, 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 that's next. You said you wanted to add something here under council discussion.
Oh, no, I was going to be under council announcements and statements.
Oh, I'm sorry. Matt.
Oh.
Councilmember Mungarhour.
Appreciate it. I had two, but I'm going to pull one, just because it's been a long night, and we can talk about it another night. But one that I do want to put on for a future agenda item, so we can give some direction to city staff, possibly this council supporting the state's removing of the personal property tax. The state legislature is discussing it, we all know that they move glacially slow at times, but having brief discussions with staff and having gone through the budget cycles and some other, some other discussions with Mark and, excuse me, Mr. Roloff and Ms. Larson, it may be appropriate that we take a stand and we, we put out a statement of support in regards to the state removing of the personal property tax with certain conditions, of course. I don't know if we want to discuss that at all tonight, but at the very least, I'd like it on a future agenda item to talk about and give staff some direction.
We didn't have it on the agenda, so I don't think we can really discuss it tonight, but...
I'll forward council an email from the league.
League.
You may or may not have already seen, I know at least two of you did, but I'll bow for that DSC good idea.
Okay. Yeah. Okay. So, next is citizen statements to council. Do we have anyone registered for the second round of citizen statements?
No one is registered.
All right. Now, council member announcements and statements.
Thank you, Mayor.
Deputy Mayor.
Just a reminder, we're going to a closed session next council meeting to discuss city managers. Midyear, and I just want to say, congratulations to the Oshkosh North girls softball team for winning a state championship. I know it's been many, many years in the making, but awesome representing the city of Oshkosh and all our athletes that were involved in spring sports this year. I know they represented the city and their schools very well. So, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Next is city manager announcements and statements.
Can I?
One moment. Councilmember Peschel.
Deputy Mayor Herman, just for record, what time on the 25th?
Closed session will be after the council meeting, as always.
Oh, never mind. Thank you.
Okay.
It's all right.
I'm sorry, Councilmember Miller.
Thank you, Mayor.
I keep missing you.
That's all right. Seeing as Deputy Mayor Herman stole my thunder, just another shout-out to Oshkosh North and the girls, they did a fantastic job and incredible season for them, so, record-setting. Thank you.
All right. Now, city manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Announcements and statements.
A couple memos in your packet, one is about a cooperative purchase of a Shelby, a vehicle for the engineering division that was budgeted. Item 41 is the professional services agreement with FGM Architects. Council previously allocated funds for the space needs assessment for police. FGM is underway and will be reporting back to council once that study is complete. We also have professional services agreement with AECOM to do the final plat for industrial park expansion, that's with some of the new work going out there. The expansion with everything going on with respect to the transload facility, getting a lot of interest, so we need to plot out pieces of land that people are interested in doing, so we're getting the ball rolling on that. Happy to report, I know council's aware of it, because we had already announced it in a newsletter, but the city was awarded a $300,000 community-wide assessment grant from the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency. Mr. Davis went to Sheboygan to receive that, the, you know, informal check and everything, but it's to review the extent of environmental contamination on properties throughout the Sawdust District. This is going to save us $300,000. There was an earlier discussion with TIF 36 about, you know, what types of things get viewed at. This will save us money that we won't have to get charged to a TIF or something like that, because this grant will enable us to do that, and appreciate the work of Mr. Davis and his staff to get that, get that grant done. And then I have the...
Probably Ms. Brandt wrote that grant, probably, right?
With help. I'm not sure who necessarily writes them, but it is a team effort, and I'll shout out the entire team.
All right. There, that's better.
I'll stipulate Mr. Davis was nodding his head up and down back there.
Well, let the record show, thank you, Mr. Davis. Either that or he's nodding off, it is after nine, so, one of the two. I have the list of outstanding issues in the packet, certainly welcome for any feedback on that, and the Oshkosh Corporation update is in your agenda packet as well. Happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Councilmember Miller.
Just, just one question. I see we're pooling vehicles, do we do that across every, are we, are we pooling vehicles across every department?
We regularly do that. The state has a really good bid program, and they do a master bid, and if it, if it's a vehicle that's on their list and we're in, and seeking it, we typically go through that bidding process.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. There's nothing further?
I move to adjourn.
Move to adjourn, second.
Second.
On favor.
Aye. Aye.